Good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm sitting in tonight for President Barv Van Lonen and as well Dan Turnenhuis out this evening and so we'll be appointing Lynn Robson as our clerk for the evening. So take care of that business and moving along, I'll hear a motion for approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Lynn.
Second.
Second by Brian. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. So the agenda's approved, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Mary?
I'd like to take a few minutes this evening to recognize Associate Principal Denny Toll, who submitted his resignation earlier this summer. It was approved by the Board of Education at their August 2nd special meeting. Denny was, went to the William Penn College in Auscalusa, Iowa, I'm not sure I'm saying that right, and got a BA in industrial arts. And then he got his master's degree in educational administration from Mankato State University, one we're very familiar with. He started in 1980 as an industrial arts teacher at Central Community Schools in Fenton, Iowa. And then he worked for a few years with Budget Power, he was a lumberyard manager, and for Norlake as a marketing sales representative. And after that time, he joined the Hudson School District in 1989, and he was an industrial arts teacher at Hudson High School until 1995. He also was assistant varsity football coach and assistant varsity track coach during that time period. And then in 1995, until the time of his resignation and acceptance by the Board, he was an associate principal at Hudson High School. During that time, his time in the district certainly, Denny has touched many young lives in his work as both an industrial arts teacher and then as a high school administrator. We thank him for his service to our students and to the district and wish him the very best in the future.
Thank you. We certainly appreciate Denny's years of service to our district. Moving on then to the reports tonight, we'll be hearing a number of important reports. The first one being the 2009/10 SMART Goal Results and Peg Schumacher is going to be presenting. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you. It's always a pleasure to come and talk with you about the results of our hard work. And tonight is no exception. You're going to see some fantastic work by teachers and principals and growth all over the district that we've made and purposefully and intentionally strategized. And we're going to tell you a little bit about what were some of the strategies that we actually used and how did they work. So we'll scoot on to the next slide if we could. This is a slide that we used much of the year. This part, this work is, this body of work is from an educational researcher and expert by the name of Doug Reeves. And he has done a lot of work in the area of reform, of managing change, and of how to get, use high-impact results to get high student learning results. And so if you look quickly up at the, or at the slide, you'll notice that on the bottom, it talks about antecedents of excellence. And what we mean by antecedents, and actually what we're going to use instead of the word "antecedents" tonight, is what we're talking about is adult actions that actually cause learning to improve. And so we're going to really talk with you this evening about what particular adult actions have we employed to obtain a particular set of results. What we are looking at is, we know more about how students learn than we've ever learned or known before, and we are employing very specific, intentional, purposeful strategies, knowing that we will get particular results as a result of that. And so each building is going to be present, or each level is going to be presenting those causes of what really made student learning happen. If you look at lucky, it would be easy to think about how Hudson has been lucky in the past. We have very, parents who are very involved parents, we have students, we've got a high socioeconomic status. We could really predict that without applying much specific effort, we could get pretty lucky in our results. But we're not satisfied with lucky. We want to be strategic, meaning that we want to have high results, and we also want to know why we got those results. Because if you know why you got the results, you're able to replicate those results. And so that is where we want to be, is we want to be leading. And this is a slide that we have referenced with our staff throughout this past year, on what strategies are we going to employ to ensure that we're being a leading district, that we're actually applying best practice, knowing we are going to get particular results. We don't want to be lucky, we want to be leading. So with that, you can turn to the next, go to the next slide, Diane. So that's the area that we are going to present this evening, is some very particular strategies that have led us to be in the leading role versus the lucky role. Now, the next slide is going to talk also about a notion that I believe I presented sometime earlier in the year, about this notion about teachers being action researchers within their own classrooms. And so if we know that there are particular strategies that are going to yield greater results, what we encourage teachers to do is, we want you to try them out. We want you to actually employ these strategies and not just hope for the best, but we want you to measure, did they work or did they not work? Go ahead, Diane. So what action research is, is systemic and intentional inquiry carried out by teachers about how it is that we're going to improve instruction. And this, it's very personal, and it's, it causes them to be very reflective practitioners. The next slide then shows that sort of research, if you will, that action research component where you begin, you start with saying, you know, I have a hunch, if I'm employing higher-order questioning strategies, I have a hunch that my students are going to be able to comprehend text at higher rates. And so you make a plan, you act on the plan, you observe what happens, and you reflect. This cyclical process is called action research, and it really is putting the scientific process into teaching. What's beautiful about that is I know as a school board that you've been very interested in measuring. You want to measure whether these actions, whether these programs, whether these strategies are working. This puts the results piece there, because in action research, you actually measure the actual impact on the particular strategies the teacher employed. This next picture shows, we had about 10 teachers that did action research projects this year, and we are going to expand that to the entire district. But this is a group of second-grade teachers that presented to the rest of their elementary colleagues as action researchers this past May. Alrighty, we're going to move on to Laura Love and Scott, and they're going to talk about the high school results.
Good evening, board members, superintendent and directors. I'm, I'm going to report on several different SMART Goals and that the high school has been focusing on. And I would just like to preface, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to get too deep into numbers too quickly, because if I do, I tend to get focused there. And I want the bigger picture, I want you to understand that the work that the high school has been doing on SMART Goals has really been what Peg just talked to you about, is action research, how we can focus on the data that we can get from our students on their learning and how we can improve that. Not so we can just hopefully be lucky, but so how we can continue to improve that and continue to work on that. Now, in the short month that I've got to work with Laura Love, she has really embraced where we've been and where we're going in the future. So I'm really looking forward to working with her in the future on more of these and how she's going to lead that charge at the high school with, with our future SMART Goals, which, you know, some of them will be similar, some of them will be new endeavors. So with that, the first SMART Goal that I want to talk about is one that has been consistent for the last three years. The semantics have changed over the years, but it's because the first year it started out as, we're going to reduce Ds and Fs. We've, we've also worked at improving As and Bs and Cs, that's another way of saying reducing Ds and Fs. And our goal was to reduce it by 5%. If you take a look at that goal from three years ago, we met that goal of 5%, we doubled it. Our first, our first year of reducing Ds and Fs was at 10%. The following year, we met, we had another goal of 5%, we actually hit 8%. And then this year, we had another 5%. At some point, if we're reducing Ds and Fs, we're going to get to zero. It's going to be harder and harder to hit 5%. But this year's goal, as you can see, was, was 18% reduction. And so we're talking grades of, at the high school, of 20, 20,000 grades or so in a year. And so we're talking Ds and Fs of very small amounts. And so when you start breaking that down by grade level, we're not talking a lot, or about a lot of numbers of Ds and Fs. So you're not going to see, you wouldn't expect to see 18% reduction. And if we continue to choose this as a goal in the future, I would be shocked to see additional 18% because we're getting, we're getting down there to, to a small percent. I mean, we had 2% of our 20,000 grades were Fs this year. Four years ago, it was about 4%. So we've reduced that in three years by half. So that's that first slide. Why, if we can go to the next slide, Diane. Some of the reasons why, or the causes behind those Ds and Fs, is we've had guided study halls for small groups of students at academic risk, we've, we've implemented academic interventions that are applied more consistently throughout the building, not just excellent teachers doing excellent work, but excellent strategies done by every teacher every day. And that's really, I think, where we want to be going, is not just pockets of excellence, but excellence across the board, in every classroom, every day. And then the third bullet there is earned privileges based on attendance and grades. We've, we've noticed that, you know, our senior release project from a few years ago really is an incentive program. And students who don't perform well enough to earn that privilege, lose it. And those privileges mean something to students. And so we've, we've seen that data as well. The next, the next SMART Goal is one on AP classes. And our, our history in AP is long and rather prestigious. And a couple of years ago, when we looked at some data, we wanted to not just look at, okay, boy, we're doing a pretty good job at pass rates for our AP tests, but we wanted to see how we could increase the number of students taking those AP courses, because we know that there is an advantage to taking those rigorous courses, even if you wouldn't take the test. But more importantly, if you take those AP courses, we'd like you to try to take those tests and get college credit. And so those were our two goals that we looked at. One was to increase the number of students registered for AP courses, and the other one was to take a look at those students that are taking those courses and hopefully increase the number of students taking those AP exams. So when we take a look at that, I think when I was talking to somebody, it might have been Mary today, I said, boy, if you take a look at that data, we blew it out of the water. Two years ago, when we looked at this data, we had about 72% of our students taking, that were in AP exams, or AP classes, taking AP exams. The year after, it was about 82%, and this, this year, it was 93%. So we've increased the number of students that are taking exams that are in those classes. And, and we also increased the number of students registered for those courses dramatically, by about 25%. So both very high numbers of increase. The, the fun part for me is, this didn't just happen accidentally. We met with AP teachers, we brainstormed about how we can increase the involvement of students in AP courses, we talked with the supports needed for those AP courses. So advanced placement teachers provided underclassmen with opportunities to take advantages of those AP courses, we also have tutoring sessions, and we've added AP government as a class option. As you know, there's a space for learning issue in this district, and we'd like to add biology as well. It's been on the books for three or four, five years, I know, but we haven't had a space to teach it. So we're forever trying to add AP courses to the offerings, and AP government was the last one that we added, and we saw some good results with that. Moving on to the third SMART Goal that we're going to present tonight from the high school is really kind of an offshoot of our goal, of our first goal. I talked about the Ds and Fs. Part of, part of that work and looking at that data and being decision-makers driven by data, we looked at that and said, hey, how can we help our students who are struggling, who are, who we can identify as struggling in ninth grade, to hopefully minimize their failure rate early and redirect them in a positive way? So we took a look at academic risk of failure students in ninth grade. There were a couple of different ways you could look at that. There were 40 to 60 students on that list, but a number of them were served in programs that we already have existing, either that special ed programs or at-risk programs like our STRIVE program. So we ended up with 21 students that we put into a guided study hall. It was really a mentoring opportunity for students, teachers, to be connected with five or less students on a daily basis, to help them with their, their homework, their organizational skills, and really applied that best practice research to those transitions. And Patty Mueller is one of those teachers who volunteered to be a guided study hall teacher, and we just asked her to come tonight just to share a brief snippet of her experience with her two students that she dealt with this year.
Great. Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here and talk to you folks. I, again, would love to put kind of a little bit of a, more of a personal image to the data, as Scott was saying, we can get lost in the data. And so I'd like to tell you about my two fine young men that I had, I'd call them my boys, not right to them, but that I hadn't got to study hall this past spring semester. They had very poor attitudes about school. They didn't want to be there at all, neither of them. They had even poorer grades coming into this experience, which as Scott mentioned, is why they were put into this guided study hall opportunity. But what I can share with you is that with a pretty consistent level of intervention, not only on my part, but I basically, the role that I had, am I too loud, am I too close? This is alright? Okay. The role I really saw myself having in this guided study hall experience was that of kind of a facilitator with all the other teachers for these particular students. And I very much felt like a parent, very, very much. I realize, as I reflect back on it, I have two of my own boys, and I was on my two study hall boys much more often, much more regularly, much more consistently than I was my own two, one of my own two really needing it. Anyway, that's an aside. So with this consistent intervention and this networking with their teachers, we saw, and this is where I do have a little bit of data, great, what I felt, great success with, with my boys. And what I have here is, I have their grade at the end of second quarter, and then their grade at the end of third quarter. So with one quarter of this very intensive, one-on-one mentoring work with the, the boys. And boy A went from a F in history to a D, an F in English to a C+. This is in one quarter. A C minus in science to a C+. Now, being a science teacher, I'm a little disappointed in that one, I guess, but we didn't put as much energy there because that wasn't a failing grade. And then this particular student had no trouble in math. In fact, what worked out very well was that boy B did have trouble in math, and there was a definite little sub-mentoring situation going on with the stronger math student helping the other student. So with boy B, math was an F, algebra, and moved it up to a C minus. That is huge. This, this student struggled with math, and it almost hit his head against the wall with his frustration with it. And so to have another student working with him there, I mean, it's just the three of us in this classroom, so it was a very, it was just really cool to see, and see the lightbulb even go on every now and then with the algebra. Again, the student in science went from a C to a C+. Again, we didn't put as much energy in that because we already had, you know, it wasn't as much of a concern. English, an F to a D, and history, a D to a C+. So all the grades went up, every single one of them went up significantly, and we, you know, each of them still had one D, but we're talking about beginning with the Ds and Fs multiples. So it was very encouraging, but it, it was a lot of work. It was a lot of work on all of our parts. Certainly myself continuously checking their grades, which was their responsibility, but they'd just say, everything's fine, everything's in, there aren't any tests. And then I'd go into my computer, oh, well now, that is interesting. You've been still missing this English assignment. As a matter of fact, I'll end with just a personal anecdote about one of the young men, and that's that he had, did not engage at all with other human beings that were adults in the school, just very, very much not engaging. And Scott had an opportunity to experience this too with this young man, and we chatted about that. But his English teacher just would not take anything but the very best possible work from this boy. And between myself and the English teacher and this child, he just got to a point where he realized that he might as well just do the work and do it the first time because he was not going to get off the hook. So that's part of what happens in this experience. And I'll just end with what I kind of would tell these boys, because they didn't end up loving school at the end of the semester. Come on, no. They, they didn't at all. They didn't like it at all, that did not change. But what changed is that, and what I often tell my boys, you don't have to like it, you just have to do it. And they, they definitely grasped that and at least started to walk with it, if not run with it. So that's my snippet.
Thank you, Patty.
You're welcome. Thank you. Good to share with you, folks.
Just, maybe we, maybe we, maybe we don't need, yeah, go back one, if we could, please. Yeah, just, just to, a little bit of data from that group of students that Patty was just talking about is, we had a pretty strong goal of saying, wow, we're going to reduce that number by 50%. And you can, you could say that, boy, we missed our mark, we only got 28%. But of those 21 students that we're talking about, six of those 21 had fewer fails second semester. And so we believe that those are our students at risk, at the most risk of not graduating when they become seniors. And so we feel pretty good about intervening with those, and we feel pretty good about where we're going in the future. There were certainly students with more fails, that's the group, there, the group of four students, but three of those four that had more Fs had fewer Ds. So there was some improvement in pockets of their education. And maybe even more importantly, the people who didn't have any more or less fails, the same number of fails, five of the 11 of those students had fewer Ds. And so there were, maybe there was some flatlining with the amount of Fs that they had, and that could have been one or two or four, but if it were one or two and they had Ds, they had fewer Ds the second semester. So we really feel like we made improvements, and those students made improvements across the board with all 21 of those students. It's an intensive group, obviously, but it's a small group, because like I said at the beginning, we, we've got 98% of our students not getting Fs, or 98% of all of our grades. So it's more than 98% of our students not getting Fs. It's, it's a large group of students that are performing at high levels. So our focus on these, on these kids that are at risk is a small group. That's all I have at the high school. Thank you very much.
I'll just add two comments, and, and this is just in looking at the data very recently with, with Scott and Wendy and Peg. And just something that Patty Mueller just said struck me because it's very similar to what we've been hearing from the educational researchers. Rigor was increased for the students, those 21 students, because we're finally holding them accountable for the work, for the learning. And so by having the goal of fewer Ds and Fs, it kind of sounds not so hot, but holding them accountable for the learning is our real goal. And kids know, when we don't hold them accountable for the learning, it's like saying we don't care about them. And that's our goal for all of our students. And the other place that I feel like HHS has been holding students accountable for rigor is not only by encouraging more kids to take AP, but the number of students who took the exam would suggest that our, our scores across the board should drop, because we don't have just our top kids taking the exam. But to have almost 25% more taking the course, and then over 90% taking the exams, we're still above the national percent for pass rates by a lot in every AP exam area. So, and what I heard from at least one of the teachers who met with me this summer, they're doing pretty much everything they can to get those students to be successful in college by giving them the opportunity to try it out at high school. So I really want to applaud the staff who've done the work already, and as Scott mentioned, we're going to we're going to do some more of this work, and we have some other ideas for our focus for the SMART goals for next year. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Koch will speak about the middle school.
It seems like I've been here a few times recently. We can go through this fairly quickly, but I just, a comment or two with respect to some prior knowledge for you. Currently, all of our academic cores are engaged in the SMART goal process and participating in the building-wide goals that we have. So that's all of math, science, language arts, social studies, reading, communications. So all of our academic core are involved here. So essentially, obviously, we're talking about every student, you know, that we have in the middle school. And as of today, we seem to be having a whole lot of them. First day of registration for us today, boy, the lines are out the door. Our primary goal with the data has been to, this year in particular, the focus has been to influence teacher practice through the use of formative and common summative assessments, which obviously then is going to yield improved student achievement. It's a sort of a natural byproduct of that. And although frankly, we could be in position to identify and isolate certain individuals, that's really not the way we've gathered and used the data this year. We've used it on a sort of a broader, broader scope to more directly impact teacher practice. Yet we have seen considerable amount, and you can notice by looking at some of those percentages, we've seen a considerable amount of success from our, from our students. But as we look at this, obviously, the SMART goal, June 2010, 85% of our students would obtain mastery and identified essential knowledge and skills on all the common summative assessments in all of our Common Core subject areas. The percentages are there, obviously, we feel pretty good about these percentages, but there were a number of things that we discovered, and I guess that would be in my little tail at the end that I'm going to tell. But 94% of the students mastered the essential knowledge and skills in science, 86% in language arts, 94% in social studies, 90% in math, 87% in reading, and 95% in communications. Those are actually pretty good numbers, and we feel really good about it. But more than that, we feel like teacher practice changed, it evolved in order to get those, those types of scores from our students. Now, we created the essential knowledge and skills, and I think I've spoken to you before about this in terms of it will forever be a work in progress. We continue to take a look at the standards, the Common Core standards, and fine-tune those, isolate certain parts of those that we can focus on, which will be part of our SMART goal process next year. Next. Yes, the causes that we have here, you've heard some of these things from me before because these have been critical elements in our success and will continue to be, not the least of which is what's identified as at the top, created, trained, and utilized the talents of a data team to work with the staff. We sent a group to Chicago to get in some training in depth with respect to, it's one thing to gather the data, it's something else to learn how to actually use it and disaggregate it and make some meaning and sense out of, out of the information that you're getting. And this particular data team has been a very positive tool in our building. Now, I'm going to sidebar comment on this, and I'd simply say this data, what runs parallel to data is a sense of accountability, okay? And that's not routinely accepted, you know, warmly and enthusiastically when you know you're being held somewhat accountable for, for the work that you're doing. But this data team has achieved something in our building that I would not have probably thought would have happened quite as, as quickly as it did, and that is to convince staff that, that the data we were gathering, the information, was information for them to help improve practice. And the end result logically would be then improvement in student achievement. So this has been a really important and a key element in our progress thus far. And once again, the weekly collaboration time provided for the grade levels, again, you know, I cannot tell you how significant that has been. It has maybe singularly helped to transform the work that our, that our teachers do, from somewhat more isolated approaches to the curriculum to clearly a collaborative endeavor to improve student achievement. The collaboratively determine what was essential for students to know and do, and then match the assessments in those essentials, establish protocols for grade-level conversations about student learning and the results, and then utilizing templates, these were all part of that data process. Things, creating templates, tools that were conveniently and easily used by the staff, protocols, processes by which they would learn how to discuss, converse about the data. Important elements, Peg played a pivotal role in getting our staff acclimated to the protocols. And these things, when you sort of pour them all into the hopper, the end result is what I would consider reasonable, a reasonable amount of success with. And, you know, we've had the AIM program for a while, the Success Center in our building for a while, to echo what Laura was talking about, when we created the Success Center, we had one simple goal, do the work, you know, get the work done. That's what the Success Center was all about. And early on, we had, you know, a few doubters with respect to that, but the research clearly showed that if kids do the work, you know, they stand such a, you know, better chance to, you know, to succeed. And when our kids in the Success Center, you know, would not be turning in the work, we often ask them, well, you know, if you don't have the time to do the work now, how are you going to find the time to do it again? And they finally have understood that, you know, getting the work done is the first step, and that's, that's what's happening. As far as, you know, celebrating something in particular, a little story that I want to tell quickly, and it's really summarized best this way. One of the things that we discovered, when teachers were looking at the Common Core standards, the state standards, it became very, very obvious for us that each teacher both interpreted and valued certain parts of the standard, sort of in an individual kind of way. But when we brought people together to analyze and look at the Common Core, to look at the standards, the conversation that they had, sometimes the debate that they had over the important elements or the key elements of that standard resulted in us identifying absolutely essential knowledge and skills. And as opposed to each teacher somewhat in isolation, valuing this particular part of the standard and focusing more time on that, we, you know, in a collaborative sense, identified all of the same things and recognized their importance and established that as something of value that they would focus on. And that's, I think, been the upshot of really what we have been doing to get a sense of equity, you know, across the board when it comes to looking at the, you know, the Common Core standards. And that, you know, social studies, I could certainly mention our social studies team, they had focused on some things individually. When they got together, they had some rather robust conversations, looked at each other and thought, how in the world could we have done this before? When after these conversations, we realized these are the things that are of value. And then they all accepted those, that particular point of view on that element of the core. So we've been, I think, doing pretty well. I know Sandy's got some information, I think she's going to share a little bit about some of our WKCE results. End product, you saw the scores, but in our own minds, you know, the 85%, we're just shifting to 100%. That's basically going to be, it's going to be 100% of our students. We're no longer going to be satisfied with, you know, okay, 85% was really good. There's still 15% of our kids out there someplace. We recognize there are going to be varying issues and some concerns and even some discrepancies in the process, and getting 100% may, you know, we may not really actually realize that, but it's the effort in getting as close to that as we possibly can, you know, sort of the journey here that's going to make all the difference for our kids and for our staff. So we've just shifted that for next year. It'll be 100%, and we're going to measure our progress against ourselves, you know, as we work toward, toward that particular goal.
Thanks. Mr. Koch, I'm going to ask the elementary principals.
Peg, could I just stop for a minute?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Just as long as the high school folks and middle school folks are here.
Sure.
I'd just like to ask if there's any questions from the board, from these folks, and then we'll take the next elementary group. So congratulations, by the way, and it's always exciting to hear about these results. And it's particularly exciting to hear about the byproducts from this, this process. It's not just the, as you've already identified, the data that's important, but the byproducts, the energy and the passion and so forth that's coming from this, not only from teachers, but I think someday students too will, will embrace this as well. So very exciting, and congratulations. Any questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, Tom, thanks, it is. Actually, for Dan, regarding the middle schools, SMART goals, how was the 85% arrived at, Dan? Was that just sort of a benchmark or?
We just selected, we had been, I think, a couple of years earlier, we had worked at like 75%, something like that, and over time had just begun to inch that up further and further. This year, as I said, was sort of an epiphany for our staff, is what's, you know, what's this stuff, you know, these percent, it's 100%.
Okay, I couldn't remember from year to year, and this report didn't show where they were, you know, 95% or 94, you know, what was it the year before, so, okay. And next, what, how is mastery defined? Having mastery?
Well, mastery relates to the essential knowledge and skills that are identified by the teachers in each of the core subject areas.
Okay.
The things that they've identified as essential, important to know, and what kids should be able to do. And that's where the collaborative conversation between the teachers identified those things. So when those were tested, when those were assessed, it was simply a matter of calculating whether the kids were successful in achieving those goals.
Okay, is, is it a, you know, a percentage of, you know, if I were to take an examination in a given area, I mean, how would, would mastery be defined, is 75% or?
We worked on 85% out of, it's 85% of our kids getting 85% of the essential knowledge and skills. That's the way we started that.
Okay. All right, thanks, Dan.
Pat?
So you mean that, that your goal was 85% of the students would be understanding, let's see here, science? You say that 94% of the students master it. They understand it, or they got 94% in there?
That's the next goal.
That's the eternal question right there, yeah. And actually, Pat, that's, it's a good question because one of the things that we try to measure ourselves by is whether or not kids can take information or new knowledge that they have, and, you know, they've gotten that from a, what I'll call an anticipated situation, you know, they understand what's going on in the classroom. Can they take that information and apply it to an unanticipated situation, using the knowledge they have to, you know, solve a different challenge or a different problem? And that's how we measure whether or not they were successful when we do the common summative, the common summative exams.
To, just to piggyback on Dan's comment, so educators, we ask ourselves, what do you want students to know, understand, and be able to do? And then how are you going to know that they do? And which is where the assessment piece comes in. So in each content area at the middle school, the English teachers often used a rubric that's, that would show mastery. Mathematics would have their, for instance, they may have an exam, and out of 20 of those questions, six of those showed mastery in a particular standard. So it really depended on the criteria that was set, but they had to ask themselves, how are we going to know that students have mastered this? Do they have to answer one question? No. Do they, some of, some of them could have been a performance task, so they created something. So there's multiple ways to show mastery. It sometimes depends on content area and, and the set of skills that teachers have as well.
Great, thanks, Peg, that's helpful.
Pat, did you get your question answered? Did you understand?
I get, it doesn't mean that their score or their test score is 94%.
No.
It means that they are understanding.
94% of them.
Their, that 95%, 94% of the people understand the logics and so forth, their science.
Right, what's been determined as essential, the most important things.
Okay, okay.
Good.
Just a quick question for the high school. You mentioned earned privileges based on attendance and grades, and early release was one of them. What are the others that were, would be considered earned privileges?
Well, we've, we've tried to incentivize grades as much as we could, sorry, I probably shouldn't be making up words like that. But one of the examples from four, four or five years ago is the Raider card, where students get an opportunity to earn their Raider card sticker, which is just a silver sticker on their ID card. But that is determined by not getting any fails and having good attendance and not having any major behavior issues. And so we have, just, you know, that's, off the top of my head, we have like 680 students who get their Raider card sticker, which gives them free entrance into all home events. And so the first year, we did it as a pilot program, not knowing how kids were going to respond, and we said, ninth graders can't get this. You don't get this until you are at the high school and you, you earn this through your second semester grades, and we'll give it to you in the fall. And so they get their ID cards in the fall, and 10th, 11th, and 12th graders look for that sticker. And they say, hey, I got my Raider card sticker, you got yours? And they use it to get into games free, but they also, we've, we've seen in the last four or five years, that it is important to them. And it is one of those things that they don't want to lose, or they want to make sure they keep. So we talk about that, that's one school-wide program. The senior release has also been a very important one. We came up with the senior release idea to alleviate some congestion, but in turn, we've, we've improved the privileges because we said, okay, you want that privilege? You've got to make sure you're taking care of business academically before you get that privilege. So those are, those are two major ones.
Great. Thank you. Thanks again. I think.
Thank you, secondary. And elementary will come to the microphone since we have more of them than space allows.
Okay. Well, we want to start by thanking the board and thanking the superintendent and directors for the opportunity to come with you tonight and share with you the 2009, 2010 elementary SMART goals, those adult actions, those intentional adult actions that our teachers undertook, and also the results of the SMART goal. So as you can see on the screen, the SMART goal was 83% of all learners will be reading at or above grade level by 2010, and that is assessed by the Fuentes and Penel and developmental reading assessments.
And just to remind you from last year, we ended the year, the previous year, at 79% of our students reaching that year-end target of being at or above. And so our results that we presented earlier this, this past spring was that the fact that we get 86.1% of our students there. And so we set a pretty rigorous goal to start with, going from 79 and saying we want to get to 83%, and to surpass it and to get to 86.1% is so exciting for our students and their learning. So we're really, really, really excited for what that means for our students in the elementary grades. I want to make a connection before we get to our actions as a elementary team to really the SMART goal process and how that was a catalyst from the work that we're doing. And there's really three parts of it. Number one, it's the goal setting, and, and you heard that when Mrs. Mueller talked. And then that goal, that where we want students to get to leads to this broader, building-wide, district-wide ownership, you can call it responsibility, you can call it accountability. And Mrs. Mueller also talked about that. She was responsible along with, was it the, I'm sorry, the English teacher, and they worked together. But the third part of that is that they're, that teachers and staff start relying on each other, and that's really where she got to at the end. That English teacher and herself were relying on each other to help that child make that goal. And so that really is what the SMART goal process has done for, for our staff and our teachers. At the elementary level, it's really exciting when we talk about accountability and responsibility. It goes from our educational assistants, who are, are teaching children in reading, all the way up to our superintendent, Mary. And so when we talk about what we're doing for students, it really runs that whole spectrum, which is exciting. But our first action that we've taken as an elementary team has really been the grade-level team planning time. And we talked about that as a common planning time, that's at 45 minutes each day that grade-level team members have the same time to collaborate and work together. And they plan instruction during that time. The piece that's, that they've really dove into has been examining student work and data, and that's led to discussions. work and data. And that's led to discussions about next steps. And I know that I've, I've talked to the board about this previously, but it, the one thing that impacts teacher practice the most is actually the advice that they give and they get from their colleagues. And that's exactly what happens during this grade-level planning time. And it wouldn't happen if we didn't have that time put in place. The second action that I would like to talk about is actually small group reading instruction. And our teachers are becoming experts in this area. They're becoming experts in it during their Reader's Workshop time. They're also becoming experts in that extra thirty minutes of intervention time for reading. And there's really three pieces to it, and the most important idea is that they're given feedback during that time. And they're giving feedback that's accurate, they're giving feedback that's timely, and they're giving feedback that's specific. So those of you who played athletics, or were involved in music, so if it was either a music instructor, or if it was a really good coach, you got feedback that was accurate. They're watching, and either your motion was right, or you're out of tune, but it was timely. As soon as you made that mistake, they corrected you right away. But they gave you specific directions right away to correct it and move on. And that's exactly what our teachers are doing in the small group instruction. One of our really, really big actions that have helped our students achieve the level of learning that they're able to this year. I'm going to pass over to Mr. Gramble. He's going to talk about two more of the actions that the elementary teams have, have made this year.
Thank you. One of the actions really connects directly back to what Mr. Schmidt was referring to, and that is supporting all of our students to make growth. Now, what that means is, our goal was to increase the number of students that were reading at or above grade level. In order to do that, you really are focusing on the entire spectrum of all learners. But our focus had to be on those students that were not making the progress necessary to meet that goal. Some of the structures Mr. Schmidt referred to were all about the scheduling and the organization of the time that we, that we put in place. One of the things that we were able to put in place was, we referred to it as target time, but what that really means is a small group, extra-focused instruction. Now, Mr. Schmidt referred to the small group instruction that happened for all of our students. Target time was specific to those students that were not yet at grade level. Now, the other cause that I'd like to talk about was really talked about at all levels. And we referred to it when we talked at the high school level, at the middle school level, and definitely also at the elementary level. And that is the opportunity to collaborate. And collaboration really is just about working together toward that common goal. That common goal is absolutely essential for true collaboration. Without that goal, working together isn't focused. So that collaboration requires that focus. We've created structures to allow for that collaboration. We didn't just expect it to happen by putting in, by allowing the time for it to happen. What we were able to do was create structures for principals to work with one another, to work with one another. And that took place during scheduled principal meetings, during meetings as a district, and so forth. But those structures to allow for conversations that were really focused was important. We also created structures for teachers to work with principals. So when we were meeting with teachers, we were able to have a focused conversation toward that common goal, also a help. And then, I think most importantly, were the structures that allowed teachers to work with one another, and, and allowing the time for teachers to collaborate toward that common goal. Thank you.
Suzy, Amy, and I will share student examples of success as a result of what we think are the causes that adults took, the actions that they took. We've changed some of the details to protect their anonymity, their identity. But the three or four students that we're going to describe, and the adults that worked with them, are representative of what we consider the twenty-five hundred and forty-eight elementary students across the district, in each elementary building at every grade level. In fact, we have a primary, a third grader, and a fifth grader represented in our success stories that we want to share with you. Mine is actually in the teacher's words. "One of the strengths in our elementary schools is a spirit of helping all students across grade levels. When I brought a particular student to our student support team at the beginning of the year, her writing was unintelligible." This is a third grader. "As a team, we determined I should help her with word spacing, and discovered her greatest need was an understanding of basic phonics. One of our literacy coaches teamed with me to identify her phonological needs with a BERS test, and one of our first grade teachers provided first-grade phonics materials. Our reading assistants used these materials during target time with the student. Not only did the student's expression improve, her reading did as well. She was below grade level when she started, and left above grade level. Target time has also allowed for book clubs, shared reading, and peer recommendations for our at and above grade level students. For one particular student who was frequently pulled out for gifted and talented services in reading and math, target time provided him with an opportunity to connect with his peers, helping him strengthen his social interactions with his classmates. He demonstrated less anxiety in the classroom and during standardized test-taking, due in part to the time he spent belonging to the class during target time. This team effort and the flexibility of target time has helped me successfully meet the individual needs of each of my students, whether struggling, achieving, or accelerated in their reading development."
Thank you. I have the opportunity to share another celebration of one of our students at the elementary level, and this again comes from the teacher's perspective and the teacher's voice. Last summer, a little boy walked into math and reading camp. He was shy and not very happy to be there. Mom was teary as she dropped him off because she felt guilty making him go, yet she wanted everything in her power to help him to become that better reader. During camp, he struggled and tried to find ways to get out of doing various activities, but he did come every single day. When school started and we made our hopes and dreams for the year, he quietly told me that he wanted to be able to read a Magic Treehouse book. I wrote this down, but as I wrote, I was worried that that dream may not come true, to the fact that he was quite a bit below grade level. But we set the goal anyway, and we did everything we could in our power to reach it. He became a hard worker and would ask things when he did not understand. He needed to find a place in the classroom where he was not distracted, and just be able to concentrate on his reading. He would go to target time daily, and work with me in guided reading three times a week. He also needed to be reading at home daily. As the year progressed, so did he. He was putting the skills that he learned and applying them to his reading. He would nag me if we didn't meet for his dates for guided reading. At the second conference, I told his parents that he was really improving, and I felt that he would have a great chance of being at grade level by the end of the year, and he did. Mom cried again and said how, every night, he was finally reading to his baby sister. Finally, as the end of the school year was coming to an end, I met with him. I asked him what his plans were for reading that summer, thinking I would try to motivate him, but he already had that list out for me. Of course, the series of Magic Treehouse books is on there. I know that some of them will be above his grade level, but with the wonderful support he gets from school and home, he will find success and truly enjoy reading. Thank you.
We all fought to share our stories, and I guess the three of us won. I think the pride that all of us have is apparent. I think you can see that. But I think the students' pride in what they've done has been very obvious. And those of you who remember when we redrew our boundaries, the work that the principals have done to have a one system, this is the first time we're presenting our results as one system. And it's very exciting. I think as our, we talk about all students, we really have embraced that. Every teacher, every student, every principal really looks at the data and our students. And I just want to share a couple little stories, especially about our ELL students, our English language learners, who have typically been what I would call underserved. They were kind of under the radar. They were in our classes. Our teachers were working extremely hard, but we didn't have the data to show that we weren't meeting their needs. And we have that data. Teachers have worked extremely hard to find the way to help those students. And one of the ways that we can help our English language learners, but also other students who haven't had life experiences, like we would assume most students in Hudson would have, we provide those. And the teachers do a lot of building of background knowledge, and whatever they can to teach them the vocabulary words to help them be successful. And we had a summer school program we were running this summer for our English language learners. And they spent a good week getting ready to go to the fair. And you can imagine all the vocabulary that these students had never been exposed to, and cows, and udders, and all sorts of things. And so, they spent lots of time on that. And, you know, our teachers read those books and really don't even think about the lack of understanding that some of our students have, their experiences. And the teacher was telling me how they had spent so much time talking about blue ribbons. And they had some examples of blue ribbons, and how you earned a blue ribbon for having a good cow and a horse, and all those other things, and making a good dress. But they still got to the fair, and they wanted to know how to buy those blue ribbons. So, you know, I think, but that's one small example of how our English language learners' needs have been met. I have a fifth grader who has spent years learning English, and she now translates for the teachers, for the younger students, and for parents. And she will go into the middle school, has qualified for gifted and talented services at the middle school. So, all of us are extremely proud. Those represent all of our students, some of the stories that we have to tell. So, thanks for letting us share those.
So, questions?
Thank you. Thank you very much. It must, it has to be awfully fulfilling for you as professionals in this field, as teachers, as administrators. From my standpoint, as a board member of this district, it's certainly very, a matter of pride for me. I'm very proud of this district and the accomplishments that we've seen and done, and the focused energy towards advancing these goals. And I believe that there'll be a day that these kids will also feel that pride and sense of having, really have been impacted in their lives. Questions? Thank you.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yeah, Chair.
I would like to comment on what we've seen. Certainly, this shows, again, development of our system for learning. Learning at higher levels for each of the students, and support for that learning. It comes from the work and leadership of Peg, Sandy, all of our administrators, with our principals, and down to our teachers. And then, when we look at that data, I really like the way we represented the data, both in the number sense, but also in the individual student, because that's where it makes a difference. So, congratulations to all of you, and thank you for very hard and very focused work this year that's made an enormous difference for many, many students.
Thank you. And now, we'll hear some more good news, I believe, from Sandy Kovac on the WKCE and NWEA MAP test results.
Thank you. Yes, these two reports definitely complement each other. A lot of the data I'll present will become part of the data that's examined by the sites as they work to develop the goals for next year. Many of us are aware that No Child Left Behind requires all states to develop and administer annual tests in reading and mathematics for all students in every grade, three through eight, and then once in subjects in grades nine through twelve. And in Wisconsin, that's in grade ten. Wisconsin schools initiated the current yearly tests in reading and math in the fall of 2005. This past June, Diane, I'll let you click one more ahead. This past June, Wisconsin formally adopted the Common Core State Standards for English Language Arts and Mathematics. The standards are aligned with college and career expectations, will ensure academic consistency throughout the state and across other states that adopt them, and they have been benchmarked against international standards from high-performing countries. Additionally, Wisconsin will work with the Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium to develop high-quality common assessments that are connected to classroom instruction. And to date, thirty-two states have adopted the Common Core standards that we're aware of. This will make a big impact, we believe, as we move forward with the, especially the assessments that are developed across the many states. As we look at this year's assessment data, we begin by looking at Hudson Student Performance versus the state. As you can see, at every grade level, in both reading, in the next slide, please, and in math, the percentage of students scoring proficient at advanced exceeds the state at every grade level. As we look closely at this data, I want to remind everyone that each test was developed independently, so we want to focus on the percentage difference between the district and the state at each grade level as we strive for consistency in that gap from grade level to grade level, versus looking for consistency of level of performance across all grade levels. Next slide, please. Next, we'll examine reading and math trend data. This type of data shows the performance of each grade level over a five-year span of testing. We see that overall, the district scores are stable in reading at the elementary level. Just take, give a little moment to look, so you can see now we have five years of data, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. Next slide, please, followed by the secondary, six, seven, eight, and ten. And you can see some slight increases at several of those grade levels from the first year to the next, with our largest gain actually in tenth grade in reading from eighty point nine to eighty-four point six. Next slide. And then, in math, we see a trend of rising scores over the five-year span at both the elementary, next slide, and also at the secondary. And I'm going to point out especially the five percentage point gain in sixth grade from oh-five to oh-nine, and the eight-point gain in seventh grade. Next slide. In 2006, we began the process of benchmarking Hudson against high-performing districts in the state, and those we selected were Cedarburg, Elm Brook, Kettle Moraine, McQuantheansville, and Whitefish Bay. And last year, we also started an additional benchmark with comparable-sized districts in the state, specifically Franklin Public, Germantown, Menominee Falls, and McQuanago. And I've pulled a few examples to share with you tonight. And the first one you can see is grade five reading. And this first slide, then, is showing a reading comparison with Hudson against the high-performing districts of the state. And next slide, fifth grade reading once again, and this time, we're showing Hudson compared to the comparable-sized districts. The next slide I'm pulling out, then, is also showing reading, but this time in grade seven. And I made a point of making it red where it says Fall 2006, because our goal has been the last few years, when we combined and first started looking at just the proficient and advanced, we're holding our own. We're doing very well against both the comparable size, as well as the high-performing districts. But you might recall that when we started looking really at the advanced category, like this slide in 2006, that's where we're really putting our attention, raising that rigor so that we get more students into that advanced category. Because that target really is what we're shooting for, to get more students performing at that upper level. And in the SMART goal report that was just provided, you heard of some of the great strides that were being made in reading. So I want you to just watch, and Dan's going to help me here. Okay, I want you to watch. Now, here's Fall 2006. Watch specifically the advanced category. All right, Diane, the next one. Keep your eyes on the advanced. See where we've come into, over that span of five years. Diane, go back one more time now. Here we were in 2006 in advanced, and now 2009. All right, so that's what we, that's what we want to see. All right, the next slide, then, is showing comparable size in the reading category. And then, Diane, you can see that we're doing great there. All right, this time, I pulled out for math showing just that advanced category. Like we're saying, we want to see over time that we're making more strides in that advanced category. And I want you to look, then, from 2005 on the far left with the blue, to 2009 in grades three, four, five. I mean, you can just take your pencil and almost want to just draw a line. Every single one, if you're looking for trend data, I mean, there's always little, you know, blips in the radar there. But if we drew trend lines, you can see that we definitely have improved in that advanced category in all of those grade levels, exactly what we want to see. Next slide. And then, finally, we're going to show in grade eight mathematics, high-performing district comparison with Hudson. And then, one more, eighth grade mathematics against comparable-sized districts. All right. Next, we are pleased to announce this evening and share that a ranking that's kind of done by an independent person, consultant that we work with, he takes all of the scores, so not just, just reading and math, but also the science and the social studies and the language arts, and does a composite score of all of those scores, and then puts them by comparable size. by comparable size. And when you take our middle school, which is a very large, as we know, middle school, we are ranked, when we're looking at schools over the enrollment of 250, we have, are ranked number three this year when we're looking at our test scores. And that certainly agrees with, and aligns with the Middle School of Excellence Award that was received by our middle school just this past February, high-performing school.
Sandy, I just want to add one little piece of information, as we've told the board in the past. You know, this is looking at enrollment over 250 students. Sandy talked about large middle school, in fact, the largest middle school in the state of Wisconsin.
Next slide, please. To report the progress of individual schools and districts toward the goal of 100% proficiency, No Child Left Behind uses a measure known as adequate yearly progress. And each year, schools receive a report from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction showing their AYP rating status. And this report includes information about attendance, graduation, test participation, and district and individual school scores on the state reading and math tests. And for Fall 2006, the criteria included, 74% of all students tested must be proficient in reading, 58% must be proficient or advanced in math, 95% must be enrolled in tested grade levels and participate in those state tests, elementary-middle school attendance rates must be at least 85%, and high school graduation rate must be at least 80%. And again, you can see for 2009-10, Hudson made AYP in all areas. Next slide. The stated goal of No Child Left Behind is to have all children score at the highest two levels of achievement, proficient or advanced, on statewide tests by the school year 2013-14. And the percentage of students who need to score at proficient advanced to meet AYP increases over time, as you can see in this slide. The criteria increases next year to 80.5% of all students tested must be proficient or advanced in reading and math, and, or reading, and 68.5 in mathematics for the 2011 school year. And you can see now that we're getting close to that 2013, it really ratchets up as we look for proficiency. Next slide, please. Writing is another area assessed through the WKCEs, and at the fourth grade level, you can see the scores have remained shifted to the right. So, if you look at that first blue for 2005, we pretty much sat in the middle, kind of a tall bell-shaped curve. And what you want to do is move that data to the right again, so that you're moving more kids into higher levels of proficiency. And you can see, for the last four years, we've kept those scores over to the right. And to stress this point, I want you to look at the very far right. In 2006, there were just six students that scored above six points. In Fall 2007, there were eight students that scored above six points. And in Fall 2010, there were nine students that scored above six points. So, again, keep working, we constantly keep working on moving more students into those advanced level. Next slide. At the eighth grade level, writing results have stayed fairly consistent, kind of all, the whole group has been moved over to the right a little bit. Just to share with you, language arts is currently under program review, and our research that we have been conducting has pointed out that writing is an area that we want to be examining, especially nonfiction writing, and we'll be working on that over the next few years. The middle school also started this year to work on increasing reading and writing across all content areas with a lot of the work of the literacy coach at the middle school. The highlight here that I want to point out is at the eighth grade levels that we have our first student scoring in the top category of 8.5 to 9 points. So, we have one at the very top. Next slide. The other large-scale assessment that we use in our schools is Northwest Evaluation Association, or NWA's Measure of Academic Progress, which you often hear referred to as the MAP test. Reading and math tests are administered in grades three through five in both the fall and the spring, and in second grade and then grade six through nine at, in only the spring. The strength of the MAP test is the monitoring of growth in student achievement and the quick turnaround of information for our teachers. Tonight's data displays the median RIT scores for each grade level over our six years of testing. And just a reminder, our RIT score is an equal interval score, so it's kind of like feet or inches on a yardstick. So, what allows us to do is that we get to look over for growth over time that way. So, the first slide shows results in reading, where you can see slight increases in the median score in almost every grade level. Again, looking from the first bar to the last bar and kind of drawing a line, we're just about where we want to see, we see growth over time in just about every grade level. And Diane, the next slide, please. And then again, in math, you can also see slight rise in those median RIT scores over the, over the span of those six years. Next slide. The next two slides compare district median scores against national median scores. Hudson is in blue, the national median score is in red. And again, in every grade level, in reading and in math, so next slide, Hudson outperforms the nation. And last slide. Last year, I shared the start of some 3-5 trend targets that we put in place, and I'd like this evening then to provide a status check after our first year, looking at our targets. The first target you can see is looking at third-grade students wanting to raise the amount of students, or the span between the district and the state, looking that we wanted to have more students, a 10% gap between our, our students and the state. In 2008, we had 8.8 above that state average, and we had eight this year. So, this one, we will continue to work on. And you can tell from the previous report that obviously, the area of reading is a high priority at our elementary site. So, we're going to assume almost that this fall, when the students, the third graders take those tests, after all the work at the elementary, that there'll be some impact on our WKCE results as well. The second target looked at having more students reach the advanced category. And if you look at all of the grade levels comparing 2008 reading to 2009 reading, and then looking at math 2008 to 2009, in both reading and math, four of the seven grade levels saw increases as we go along. And you can also see that, some of this, we may want to also look at the trend data over time, because sometimes there's going to be little blips again, but overall, we're, we are seeing in almost every grade level, reading and math, as we look at the six years of time, some nice increases occurring. The third target was the fourth and eighth grade writing scores, and you can see that that target has been achieved in 2009 at both the fourth grade and the eighth grade level, with more students performing at those upper levels. And the final target focused on our secondary schools, wanting to have both of our schools in the top 10% of comparable-sized districts. And as I mentioned, we know that middle school did attain that, they are actually in the top 8% with their ranking. And the high school, I will be working with the new administration, Laura Love, as well as the APs and staff, to work on achieving this target over the next few years. On August 16th, in just about a week, our district SMART teams will be gathering to examine much of the data that's presented through this report, as well as the SMART goal results, as they work on development of their 2011 SMART goals. And I always like to end just reminding all of us, especially our community that's listening, is that when it comes to parents looking at data, just to recognize that a lot of the scores, when it comes to WKCE and the MAP data, is one piece of data. You need to make, work closely with your children's teachers and look at all of the data that's included on their, into their success. Thank you.
Great report. Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Tom, just, just on that very, very last point here, not to, the, the high school, it's quite a dramatic different, drop actually, unfortunately, from 2008 to 2009, Sandy. I guess, one is I noticed that there is less, less schools out of, it looks like out of, Hudson ranked 10 out of 67, that number dropped to 58 for '09. So, what's that? And then, is there anything that could, that we could sort of point to that had us slipping so dramatically in one year?
There wasn't, out of all of the, the five assessments, there wasn't any one that stood out. There was just a little drop in all of those. So, yeah, we'll be sitting down with the staff and looking, digging deeper into each of those assessments and seeing what we can, what we can do.
It's interesting, because I mean, you know, the middle school is, you know, fairly consistent numbers here. So, it's just kind of, you know, that the high school is kind of an anomaly. Well, thank you.
Other questions, comments?
I'm looking at this, the 26-58, also, I just, wow, we dropped. But if we look at our own scores, do we drop in our own school, or do these other schools raise themselves up?
Most likely, a little bit of both, Pat. That some of the schools came up a few percentage points in several of the tests, and then in the reverse side, we saw our scores go down in several of the tests.
As far as our goals, our own school compared, did go down a bit.
Correct.
Anything else, anybody else? Thank you, Sandy. Okay, we are to hear now the 2010-11 Enrollment and Staffing Update with Nancy Sweet.
Okay. My comments tonight are unofficial and very preliminary, because our schools are registering students this week. The high school is registering, middle school's registering, three, only three of our elementaries have completed their registration process. Now, registrations do occur continuously, but this is the official, these are the official days of registration. I do want you to know, though, that our elementary enrollment K5 is up overall, and I'm comparing that to the official count in September, the third Friday in September last year, 2009, and we are up from that. Our most significant grade level growth is at the kindergarten level and the first grade level. We are up nearly 50 students at the kindergarten level, and up almost a similar number at the first grade level compared to last year nearly at this time. Five of the six elementary grade levels now are over 400 students. The remaining grade level is just two under 400. So, we may, we may achieve that 400 mark yet this year as well. The most significant building growth has been at Rock and at Holton. Yay, Holton, huh? The middle school is continuing to grow as well. They're continuing to show growth. And the incoming sixth grade is showing the largest increase. So, the sixth grade is the largest for next year. And overall, there's continuing growth at the middle level. High school level remains stable. The enrollment remains pretty stable compared to last year, but there is a significant indicator that the largest class is, is now the ninth grade level. So, if you think about the largest classes at the elementary level being kindergarten and first, where the greatest growth is occurring, kindergarten and first, moving on up to middle, sixth grade is the largest, and then up to the high school, ninth grade. So, the beginning classes of each level are showing the greatest growth. And of course, they move through with some growth, some loss, but as they move through, of course, we'll see greater impact on our elementaries, our middle, and then ultimately, our high school as well. So, that, that recent history of, of stable enrollment at the high school will not last. It will not last. So, those are the unofficial preliminary comments regarding enrollment. The staffing, however, if you'll recall, the reallocation plan, resource and reallocation plan that the board approved some time ago now, we did add two kindergarten classes just within the last week. Okay, one at North Hudson and one at Willow River. You'll recall, overall, there's, there's close to 50 additional kindergarten students across the district. So, we did add two. You'll recall that in that reallocation plan that you approved, there were 3.5 positions for growth. And we now have used two of the 3.5. There is some percentage, small percentage also additionally for some music and some fayed associated with those additions. Tim and I worked together closely on this. He verifies my data, I verify his. If you'll recall, the reallocation plan had proposed additions, and then there were proposed reductions. And as enrollments and registrations occurred and other factors impacted the staffing, we actually reduced slightly more than the number you approved. That's on the bottom of the chart. And we have added less on the top than we proposed to add, again, because of enrollments and other, other factors. And I'm sure we can give you a very final report probably after the school year begins. So, enrollment, we're growing, and we're being very, as conservative as we can on the staffing while still maintaining our class-size guidelines.
Thank you, Sandy. Any questions or comments from the board? Lynn?
Nancy, how does that growth, that growth compare to what Hazel predicted, Hazel Reinhardt? Do you know how that ties to that data?
I did not do that, I did not do that study, but I would have that ready at my next report.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? What's the numbers of the middle school? What's the growth in the, totally in the middle school, total?
Well, the, the, and again, these are preliminary numbers, but it's approximately a section. It's around 25 we're up.
Thanks. Karen?
Just want to, again, reiterate Nancy's comments and caution. This is very preliminary, and we often have additional students that walk in the first day, as well as we get notification of some students who have moved. So, our official enrollment numbers will be the third Friday in September. We will have first-day enrollments, and that's a little different than the third Friday in September numbers, which we'll talk about at the September meeting. But just at this time, we anticipate being up at elementary, middle school, and same at the high school. And I think that's as far as we really can go with these numbers.
Thanks again. It's probably safe to say that we should continue to plan for growth. So, thank you. Then moving on, we've been, the district's been awarded a Student Services Grant that Corey McIntyre is going to tell us about.
Thank you, board members. Tonight's my pleasure to share with you that the district has received two grants that'll continue to support our efforts to increase student achievement. And the first grant is an alternative education program grant. And as you can see in your materials, the grant award that we received for this year is $90,000. That's from DPI, and this will allow us to improve on and expand our STRIVE program for our at-risk students at Hudson High School. The grant will allow us to add additional courses, increase enrollment by up to 20 students, and increase the, and maintain the teacher FTE, teacher-student FTE ratio that we so, you know, desperately need in that kind of a program. The initial grant application was for five years, and basically, we've been awarded that. We just have to apply or submit paperwork every year. So, if we continue to qualify and the grant continues to exist for the five years, we have the potential to receive up to $360,000 over the next five years for this, for this program. So, significant. And I want to just take a moment to thank Cindy Mitchell and the STRIVE staff, and also the high school administration for all their efforts in applying for this grant and through the process. They've just really done a great job to support our students. Secondly, I want to share with you that we received an IDEA preschool mini-grant for $3,000, and this is also in your materials, as you'll see. And what this grant will do for us is continue to support our Early Childhood Networking Group, which really is a collaboration of the 10 different childcare centers in Hudson, the preschool centers in Hudson, and also the 23 different home childcare providers, and getting them together to collaborate and, and provide training, especially tied to the Wisconsin Early Learning Standards. This also then allows us to continue our, what we like to call our seamless transition between birth to three to our three-year, five-year-old program here at, at Rivercrest. So, those efforts are very significant, and Pam Morrison and the Early Childhood staff have just done a great job in getting this, this money awarded to Hudson. So, we're very proud of that as well. Thank you.
Appreciate the help with the, the grant and the extra funding. And any questions or comments about? or comments about these two grants? Okay. Moving on then to the final report that we have this evening on the preliminary budget update that Tim Erickson is going to share.
Thanks, Tom. I wanted to make a few comments before we delve into the, into the numbers. As we normally say each, each year when we're going through the budget, this is a preliminary budget, and we have major factors in this budget that aren't finalized yet, and they don't get finalized until mid-October, so we're already four months into our fiscal year. Those components are the final state aid dollar amount that's going to be, is going to be figured, and then property tax valuations. So with that in mind, moving forward, when we looked at the first state estimate that came out, and looking at the state's budget deficit that they're facing, we're planning for a reduction in state aid this year, and it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of just under a million dollars. What we've done to reduce the tax levy and the impact on the local taxpayers is in this preliminary budget, we've reduced about six expenditures by about $600,000. We've also applied about $700,000 in savings from our previous federal and stimulus funds to close those gaps. We continue to levy, and this budget is no different, as in previous years, we continue to levy underneath what's allowed by the state, and currently, we're in the range of six to seven million dollars under the levy cap. And again, I, I dare say that's probably more than any other district in the state when we get the final numbers out. And then finally, we continue educate, we continue educational excellence in the district, and to do that, we invest in additional classroom staff and accommodate the continued student growth. And you, and you heard Nancy talk about the numbers, certainly at kindergarten and first grade, we're, we're continuing to, to grow even in the economic times that we have. So, you know, certainly does, it's a good thing, does present challenges as well. So, so with that, we'll move into the preliminary budget estimate for 2010-11. And the first line is, is the big one, of course. We have two, our two main funding sources are property taxes and the state aid, and so property taxes are going to move from the 9-10 budget of $23,268, estimated to go to $25,086. We have, and I'm just going to highlight a few items, certainly if you have questions after, you can, you can certainly ask those. Investment earnings, you'll see a large drop there from 200,000, that was estimated, down to 25,000. Certainly, the, the interest earnings, interest rates are, are down. We've taken a very conservative approach with any available cash to invest. We're, you know, really focused on safety of that cash, and so with the combination of those two things, making sure our cash is safe, and also going after, trying to, trying to get, you know, maximize investment earnings, but in, in this environment, that is, that is definitely a challenge of ours. If we move down to equalization aid, $23,079 is the 9-10 budget number, and $24,446 is the 10-11 budget number. You'll see that that has gone up, but as I said, it, it hasn't gone up as much as if we plugged in a conservative estimate, and the change, what the state's proposing, the change in the funding formula actually decreases the amount we would have otherwise received. So, the, the amount, the reason it's going up, again, is because of student growth, but it isn't going up as much as we would normally anticipate in a, in a normal year where the state's not pulling back. We've got, and the final line under the revenues, line 900, which is other, we're able to access, that's going from 13,000 all the way up to 128,000, and a big part of that is the, we have some, access to some Microsoft vouchers that we'll be using in 10-11 for some computer, for some technology needs. And, and so with that, that's about a 6.6% increase in total revenues, and then we'll jump down to the expenditure side. First line, salary and benefits, of course, we're, we're a service organization, so the majority of our budget is spent for people, and that's going from 36.2 to 37.671, about a 3.1% increase. Other items of note, if you look at other purchase services, those are things that are contracted on an individual basis, when we contract with companies for different services and, and work, and we're actually going down 1.35% in that category. If we look at non-capital expenditures, we're actually going down almost 8% in that category. If you look at line 500, which is capital expenditures, there's an asterisk there, and that is going up, but it's going up because we are, if you remember, we're taking, for the middle school addition, we're taking a million dollars out of fund balance, and that's how we budget for that, take that out of fund balance. Again, that is not a levy, that, that is not levied, that is coming out of fund balance, so it's internally financed. And then the other million dollars tonight, you'll hear as we go through the rest of the agenda, is the qualified school construction bond. So if you, if you looked at that line item and took it out and go all the way to the right-hand column, we'd really be talking about $838,000 there, and again, that would represent at one point almost a 2% decrease in expenditures. So overall, we've, we've pulled back in a lot of the expenditure items to, to balance this budget in light of what our state aid estimates are at this point. So if you go down to the very bottom, under the surplus deficit line, we planned a budget deficit for 9-10 of a million 50. We're still closing out our year, going through the audit right now, and we do expect we'll be fairly close to that. And then the preliminary budget for 10-11 is a $1 million deficit, and that's because of the middle school addition, the million, million dollars coming out of fund balance. And then you can see the projected end of your fund balances there. So any questions on the first page?
Questions for Tim? Lynn?
When will the state aid number be finalized, Tim?
The state aid number will be fini-, like, those numbers come out mid-October, and then you will adopt, do a final adoption of the budget towards the end of October.
Thank you.
Tim, on the investment earnings, what, what percentage, what percentage, rate percentage were we factoring in on that for returns, on that invest, on those investments?
Were a little over one, on average, were a little over 1%, probably somewhere in a 1.3, 1.4% on any available cash.
Do you take a look at kind of the, the general market, or what do you, do you base it on, anything in particular?
Well, we, we go out on a regular basis, we ladder the investments, so the maturities are different maturities, and right now, staying with, with safety, the safest place is in FDIC insured deposits. And we go out to banks locally, nationwide, through a program where we, we go out to many, many bidders, and they give us our best bid, so it's a pretty competitive process.
Thanks. Other questions or comments, Tim, regarding the preliminary budget?
Then I've got a, one, one more page on this, too.
Karen?
Just real quick. Okay, the next part is the estimated tax levy. So the, the two components are the general fund levy and debt service, and when you look at the pieces, and the total levy amounts of $27,828, that's 9-10, and then we're estimating, again, $29,647 for 10-11, so the actual levy increase is estimated to be 6.54% for this. If you remember, when we went through the original financial projection back last year, we were estimating a levy increase of about 8.85%, so this is, this is down a couple, a little, over a couple of percentage points, and then we've got some assumptions on this budget. So again, that concludes the preliminary budget report.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on then to topics for action, and we'll take each of these items individually. Start with the High School of Future Research Team recommendations. Mary Boeneggerbrot.
And as the team starts to come up here, I'll just make a few initial comments. You'll remember that the High School of the Future Research Study was part of the 2009-2010 district goals, and we've had a representative team of teachers, administrators, students, parents, community members, and a board member do this work on the team. They researched high school programs and organization and structures that align with our strategic vision, HSD 2025, and tonight's recommendation is based on their research and study. The team was chaired and facilitated by Tracy Habashaline, and then Peg Shoemaker also joined her with some of the facilitation. And tonight, we have Tracy Habashaline reporting to us, as well as two of our high school teachers, English teacher Kim Powers and German teacher Chuck Bovlitz.
I'm going to start with just a, a quick review of the work of the team. As Mary stated, we had 22 members. Diane, if you want to forward off of our School of the Future. Yeah. We had 22 members on our team, and our charge was to look at and research and redefine how high schools go about the business of doing the work of educating our students, meeting those expectations of HSD, our strategic vision, HSD 2025, and the 21st century learning skills that we want our graduates to be leaving Hudson with. The team reviewed over 22 model schools, and from that 22, they narrowed it down to nine schools that they chose to visit, and further research what those schools were doing and what they were implementing as far as their focus on organization and structure, and to see what we could learn from that experience. I'm going to turn it over to Chuck, who's going to talk about those actual visits. Oops.
We're going to, we're going to take a look at three schools that, three of the nine that we visited that kind of represented, or best represent, some of the recommendations that we're going to make tonight. The first one is the School of Environmental Studies at the Minnesota Zoo, which is in Apple Valley, at the Minnesota Zoo, and it's a, an offshoot of the Apple Valley School District. Yeah, there we go, okay. It's, it's a really unique place. As you can see, I was not one of the people that had the opportunity to go here, but if we can go actually to the next slide even. What we really liked about it, first and foremost, was, was the project-based learning. The students had, had an opportunity to work in, in small groups, and the, the focus really was obviously environmental, and then coming up with a variety of projects in the setting at the zoo. Then they based their instruction then around that, and they had the opportunity to go out, implement these projects, and, and that's how their learning was assessed, and that's kind of, that was their classroom in a way. There's some other facts that, that kind of just discussed, some of the other interesting things about it, three trimesters. There was, one of the things we liked, an in-depth field study, so there were kind of breaks within the school year that weren't vacations necessarily, but rather where students had a period to focus solely on one thing that they felt passionate about. At times, there were some trips that they could take, other times, it was more in-house type of stuff, but there was a break, if you will, from class so that they could focus on one particular project. A lot of flexible learning space, so that students could be working in small groups, in classroom settings, outdoors, really with the focus just being on, being in the best place and in the best situation to help facilitate the learning that was happening, and giving the students the freedom to, to do what they need to do and go where they need to go to learn. But again, the, the biggest thing we took from this was the project-based learning, so that students would come up with an overall project, and, and then they, in conjunction with their teachers, would determine what they would need to learn in order to successfully complete the project at hand, which I know, like Project Lead the Way, which we're doing at high school, very similar to that, but then obviously applied maybe in a little bit more scientific meat or manner area at the School of Environmental Studies. We can move on. Decatur Central High School, which is in Indianapolis, I think what we took from this, as you can see, primarily was the smaller learning communities. They tied a lot of what they did into the, the relationships relevance and rigor, which I know is big with IB, Suzie really likes that. But primarily, like I said, what we took from this was both in, in physical space and in their, their curriculum, everything was based around small learning communities. They'd, they'd reconstructed an old high school bit by bit. So while classes were going on year over year, they would tear down pieces and build up new pieces that were literally the, much like a middle school house in a high school setting, called them academies, and you can see there's the list on the bottom left-hand corner there, New Tech School of Ideas, Decatur Discovery Academy, the Choice Academy, Edge Academy, the ICE Academy, and the School of Quest and Inquiry. A couple of these were national models, much like Project Lead the Way. A few of them were in-house academies that they developed based on, as I recall, sort of an, an interest of students, parents, teachers, is that, is that my memory served correctly? So students belonged to a house, they attended an academy that had a particular focus that they were allowed to choose, so something that they were interested in and wanted to pursue. There was obviously some general music classes, art classes, language classes that were outside of the houses that students still had the option to attend, but if a student had a particularly strong interest, say in engineering, they could have a focus on that in the house that they're in, if they have an interest in quest and inquiry, that they're going to have classes that, that focus on that and allowed for teaching within the houses to, based around the purpose of the academy, and that's, that was the big thing we took from that. So we've got the project-based learning that we took from the Environmental Studies School, we've got small learning communities, academies, that we've taken from here, and as we move on, the final school that we liked a lot, and one that I had the opportunity to visit was Nutria Township High School. And let me just go ahead and go into the next one. The, two things that we took from this, the first one was the advisor system. Nutria, as I had the chance to tell you guys months ago now, is, is a school that very much mirrors Hudson, it's a, it's an extremely large school, much larger than we are, in, in a very affluent, good community, and they achieve almost fan- fantastical, unbelievable success rates with their students, and, and we really felt that the advisor system, and they reflected to us that the advisor system was the key to that, with an advisee, the student in the middle, an advisor who's a teacher that they see every day for about 25 minutes, you know, relating to Patty Mueller's experiences today with her guided study hall. That experience that she related and the success that she achieved is, we, it's taking that and giving every student that, so that for four years, every day for 25 minutes, they get to sit down with the same teacher freshman year through senior year, that's going to get to know them, that's going to understand what, where, where they're at as individuals, where they're at at home, where they're at in school, and be able to use those connections to help that student achieve. So I think you actually had a pretty good sales pitch for it tonight with Patty, because we want to take that and give it to every student, not just the struggling student. That's what the advisor program is. So if we move on, the, the last thing we took then from Nutria was, and this was something we actually read about or experienced at a number of schools, was that a senior year would look different. So that at Nutria, the final five weeks of fourth quarter, so the last month and a week or so of your senior year, you're not in school. You choose a program or a project that you want to work on, whether that's some type of volunteer opportunity, maybe it's an internship in a field that you're interested in, and that you then have an opportunity to go out to pursue that interest, and then you come back and, and present your learnings and your findings to the school. And so Kim will give you the, the summary.
I'm a great summarizer. So basically, we looked at all these schools, and we sat down as a large group and said, okay, what do we want to take from these schools to make Hudson High School the best it can possibly be for the future? So those four things that Chuck talked about are what we decided were our top four priorities. The advisories, the small learning communities, that we would try to incorporate project-based learning, and that we would have some sort of transist, transitions between middle and high school, and high school and college. So those are the things that we're committed to, and what we think are the, the best that we could take from all the schools that we visited. And just, you can see the stuff on the advisories again, and it's not just one, like Chuck talked about three schools, it's not just that school that's doing advisories. Advisories came up over and over and over again through all the schools that we looked at. So it's, it's just an opportunity for you to meet with. So it's just an opportunity for you to meet with, you know, 20 kids on a daily basis, and you are the one that's talking to the parents for that student and that student's other teachers. And you're building relationships with those kids that they might not get anywhere else in their school day. So we thought that the advisories was one thing that was consistent in all the schools that we looked at that we really wanted to try to incorporate here at Hudson. And then the other one was the small learning communities. More and more of the schools that were higher-performing schools were really focused on creating these small academies or communities, whatever word you want to use to call it, but to offer our students an opportunity to focus on where they want to go and how we can best meet their needs to get there, whether it's an engineering course, or whether it's a fine arts academy, but really tailoring their education to meet what they're going to need when they leave our high school. So you can see some of the stuff up there that the research suggests that it has higher graduation rates. The kids that we talked to said they bought into school much more because it felt relevant to them. They liked going to school every day because it was a program that touched on what they needed to get out of it. It promotes relationships between students and staff, and it's really working with those students' learning styles and tapping into that and giving them the greatest chance of success for their future.
Go ahead, Trace. I just want to add on to the small learning communities. We had the opportunity to look at several different ways of organizing small learning communities. Some schools chose to organize those around career clusters, while others looked more at instructional methods, so meaning that students who learn a certain way, you know, if that's, the first thing that pops into my head is project-based, but students who are more looking at inquiry and that kind of thing may gravitate more to a small learning community that's focused in that sense versus just a career, like if I'm thinking health careers, that that's the small learning community. So there's different ways of setting them up, which we didn't even begin to start discussing what that would look like. The important piece is the personalization for students, and then they continue in that same small learning community all four years. Unlike the house concept at the middle school where students stay in a house for a year and then they may switch up to a different house at each grade level.
And that's one thing I think that we're really excited about, you know, those of us that are on the team, that's one thing that we're excited about researching and figuring, okay, now that we've identified this as one of our, you know, key goals, how do we get there? How are we going to try to do this here at Hudson High School where we have so many kids? How many options do we give them, and what are we going to, you know, how is that going to look here? So that's one thing that we're really focused on researching and looking forward to kind of getting a grasp on. And then the third is project-based learning. I know the schools that I visited, project-based learning was at the foremost for them. It was taking kids and saying, okay, this is the concept, how are you going to go about learning this? What are you going to do that's going to show me that you can master this skill? So it's learning that's relevant and rigorous, and then you, most of the kids had to then take it and perform it. Show me what you learned, instead of just taking a test and moving on to the next thing. The kids actually had to get up, do something, produce something, and show that they've learned it. So it does require a little bit of independent working, but there's also work in teams, and teachers are there as that support to help them get where they need to go. So we thought that project-based learning was definitely something that we wanted to incorporate here at Hudson, more than we already do.
Probably one of the best examples of project-based learning that has come before the Board of recent is the middle school group of girls with the NASA project, where they really worked independently, but they had the guidance of a teacher, and then they actually had to present their work to a panel of experts, peers, and that's the, what we have up there as far as project-based learning is really at that degree, that level of learning and expectation for students.
And then the last thing that we talked about was just the transitions, how are we going to get kids from the middle school engaged at the high school level, and then how are we preparing our high schoolers to then go out and succeed at the college level? So it kind of ties into that, the senior year looks different, how, you know, are we giving them programs that they are in colleges at the high school level so that they're getting that experience, and they don't have to flounder when they move on to the next level, that we're preparing them and they're ready to go. And also at the freshman level, what are we doing to get them ready for the kind of academic success that they're going to have to have with us? And that ties in with the advisory system. So they're all kind of interconnected, but we felt that these were the four things that we really wanted to focus on, that we wanted to recommend to you, are the ideas that we thought would be the best for moving us into the next stage.
Okay. Having heard that report, Mary, did you have a comment?
Well, I was just going to commend the team for their work. Kim and I were just talking prior to the board meeting. We had a first meeting, and everyone was really excited about thinking about the future. The second meeting was a little, quite a bit different, in fact. It was, well, we're doing really well, and so what do we really need to do? And as we studied the different schools and site visit team came back, team members became very energized and excited again like that first meeting, and at the end, I remember comments like, we could do this, and this would really move us and our students into 21st century learning. So these are the four recommendations that the team has developed, that we'd like the Board to approve those four recommendations to move forward to the next step. It would become one of our district goals for 2010-11, and the next step would be really moving these four recommendations into the high school so that the administration and the teachers could work, further research them, the options for implementing them, and come back to the Board in the future with the next steps and also an implementation plan for the Board to later approve. These four recommendations span the gamut from something that can really be worked on in a year and steps can be started to implement, to ones that are much larger that will take more time. So the, I assume after that year that the high school staff would come back with recommendations that would include implementations and next steps.
Does the Board have any questions about this recommendation? Brian?
Yeah, a couple of questions. First of all, good work, and, you know, I was writing notes when you presented on this, was that, was that a couple, board meetings ago?
Yeah.
Couple of questions I had, though, was advisories. Now, I picked up on that, it was pretty clear when you guys were talking last board meeting, but would we do that in lieu of FYI? If we had advisories, would that maybe reduce the need for FYI in the high school?
Yes.
What's up?
I'll just jump into that, and you can add on if you'd like to. That's, that's not, that's not something that we can comment at this point. Certainly, the high school and the district has committed to FYI and the purpose for The purpose of advisories and how we move forward with advisories, or any of these recommendations, may cause us to look at another program that we have and make adjustments to it, keep it, make adjustments and so forth, whether it would be FYI or something else. You know, we're not prepared at this time to make any comments. Further study would certainly have to occur. Chuck, you want to say something too?
Yeah, one of the things that we talked about was transitions, and transitioning from middle school to high school. And so I don't know that an advisory in some way conflicts or overlaps with FYI. FYI, I think, already kind of fits in with what we recommended, that we help students adjust from being a middle school student to a high school student. So I mean, I agree that obviously none of the work's been done, but I don't think, I don't think they would conflict with each other. I think rather FYI would, in some way, shape, or form, who knows, maybe, but it fits differently than advisory would fit in, because that's a transition which is a different point in this case.
Okay. I would agree on the transitions, but look forward to kind of speaking more about that. And then the project-based learning, so I agree with, you know, the four findings here. My challenge with project-based learning is just the rigor around it, right? You know, now, there was a lot of rigor around the NASA project, right? But just in general, I have a, you're trying to help me kind of understand the rigor around that in terms of, it seems like a lot of times it's, it could be a feel-good exercise, right, that no one fails because it's just, it's not rigorous enough.
Correct. And certainly, that was a concern that-
That's a concern of mine.
-was spoken about within the team. If you have an opportunity, one of, we actually had a student who came and presented to us about project-based learning based on his experiences. We were fortunate to take advantage of Ms. Love's son who participated in project-based learning. So Max came and did a presentation, which will let you know how to view his presentation on YouTube, because it's really worth watching, because I think he spoke very eloquently about how do you bring rigor into project-based learning? And so he addressed the planning piece that goes into developing a project, looking at state standards and how does that project meet state standards, so that they need to be able to address that. They, you know, obviously have the process of carrying out the work, but the expectation of students actually connecting with professionals and the business community and whatnot to help facilitate their work and their end product was certainly important to him as a student and what he learned and took forward to his college career, but also then having to present that work back to a panel of peers, professionals, and teaching staff, and having to be accountable for what your end result was. So in one of the projects that he was involved in, it was making bio, what is the word? Biodiesel. And he went into the project with a very big idea of what he was going to produce and did not meet that challenge, but then he had to explain it, just as in the workplace, we don't always meet our goals, we have to be able to back it up as to why. And so there was, the way that particular project-based learning was set up, so it really, it depends on how the program is established.
Yeah, I get the relevancy and, I mean, I can see so many benefits of it, right, and getting a student excited about their topic, and so I can see that. I just, just a concern of mine that, not that I don't support it, but it would just be something, I really want some rigor around that, you know. The other thing that was interesting to me-
Brian, could I just comment on that one point? We share your goal of having rigor around project-based learning, and certainly, there is a continuum. It could be something that's very weak to something that's very rigorous, and that's what we're looking for. We're looking for the high end for that.
And, well, thanks for that. And then the other, it seems like the other best practice came across multiple schools was the concept of departmental chairs, that they teach one or two classes, and they're kind of responsible for the department, right? Seems like it could be some overhead too, but I don't know, any comments on that?
That was, that was, oh, sorry, that was primarily Nutria, and their administrative structure was pretty drastically different, as it seems like you recall.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, I don't know that it ties directly to recommendation that we felt was worth putting forth district-wide or high school-wide. But yeah, I thought it was very interesting, as I think I had a chance to share with you guys in May, when I think it was. It was very cool to see that the people responsible for each department and for teacher development were in fact teachers, in addition to being administrators. So I certainly share your passion for that, or I found that a really neat point as well, but I don't know that that particular point was something that we felt-
I'm not sure I was passionate about it, but it was interesting to me.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions? Mark?
Yes, I could, Tom, thanks. And we've kind of talked about it, and you've kind of addressed it. Interesting, I had the same concerns that Mr. Bell had, project-based learning. You mentioned that, yeah. I have to confess, you know, part of it is, I suppose, looking at the examples here of some of these field studies, you know, Missouri biking, first aid, you know, some of these things, and since there's three of them each, two weeks in depth at the school year, that's six weeks of learning that might be spent on possibly projects that one, we would all probably agree are not terribly rigorous. So I guess just to share that concern, I can see the appeal of project-based learning, and certainly how it was applied, with the example of our young ladies at the NASA, that's wonderful. And so I would just want to see, I guess, the implementation of that. And along those lines, too, is, I sort of question how that would work maybe in a school our size. If I'm not mistaken, the Apple Valley School was a, quite a small learning community, was it not?
Yes.
Correct, correct. And as, and you guys can add, it's not, we don't know how this is all going to move forward as far as, but I'm not sure that the vision was that every single class is going to be project-based learning with this. And just to comment on, you know, you had that section of the field studies, and I think that was with the zoo school.
Correct.
Really, the project-based piece that the zoo school, so if you think back to that presentation where the students were doing water testing for the city, those were more of the project. The field studies are kind of to get a taste of, is this something that I would be interested in pursuing on a bigger project, but really, the more rigorous pieces that those students were working on were those things that were tied very closely, in some cases, with what was going on in the community and their learning.
Yeah, thanks, Tracy. And I guess, you know, I do understand that piece, just that, again, it was, if you look at this, how it's at least set up there, you are talking about six weeks of the academic year, which I think is significant to be spent on something that, you know, might be less than rigorous. So again, excellent report, which is, with respect to the project-based learning, it'd be something that I guess I would want to see in greater detail, and would have some concerns how it would be implemented here in Hudson. But otherwise, great, thanks.
Okay. Any other comments or questions regarding this? Mary?
Well, one of the things that Mark just pointed out was a learning that team members had as we moved forward, and that was as we looked at schools, sometimes schools we were looking at were really small in comparison to Hudson High School. So did it have any applicability or not? And at first, we thought, well, no, it's not, you know, 1,600 students and so forth, and we can't use this because we can't do it the same. And what we learned was there are different ways to implement that are applicable to Hudson High School, and that's what one of the next steps is, how could that be implemented at Hudson High School, which is different? If you look at Nutria, Nutria is, you know, at least twice the size, even more than twice the size of Hudson High School, and they're doing very significant things. So both very large and very small need to be studied further to look at, how could it look at our high school? And each high school is different and has different complexities, and so that's what the next part will be, moving that research further to the next step of how, but Hudson High School how.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I just can't stress enough, for me personally, how important rigor, and both relevancy is important to me, but I don't want to be 26 of 58 schools in Wisconsin. I want to be the top, one of the top schools in the country, right? And so I just want to make sure we don't allow feel-good and qualitative exercises for five weeks impact our ability to be a top school, a top-producing school in the country.
Me. I just, I hear you, and I hear where you're coming from, and as a teacher, that's, I mean, we want our kids to be high achievers. We're not satisfied with anything other than that.
Right.
And so that's, we're in the same playing field there, and that's why we have the HSD 2025 in, you know, in conjunction with all these, you know, things that we're recommending to you, to say, we want our kids to be the best, how can we implement these things to help us get there? Because we're not satisfied with where we're at right now. So we want to take these four things and say, how can we implement these to make, you know, our school even better for our students? So we don't, we don't by any means want to take this and water down our curriculum and say, well, anyone can just do a project and do well. No, we want to say, how can we use project-based learning to ask more of our students and to get more from them?
I think one of the benefits of having the goals that we've been working through with this district, through SMART goals and others, is that we have identified benchmarks that we're reaching for, and so I think that's maybe, that's maybe a bit of an insurance policy in a sense, from what you're saying, Brian, and in terms of being able to obtain those things, we're going to have to be purposeful about what we're- going to have to be purposeful about what we're targeting, and what we're accomplishing with each of these projects. So, Mary?
I just want to add, that was very well stated by Kim. We're creating a system, and the system doesn't start at high school. High school is an extremely important part of preparation for students for college. But we're starting it at elementary, using higher results there, and as students leave each grade level and each level with higher levels, they move into the next level with that, and we have to meet that level. Part of this plan is to do that, because we have elementary kids now who are leaving fifth grade at the highest level we've seen in the district. And they will eventually get to the high school, and they're going to be at a higher level, because the middle school's working at higher levels as well. So, the high school's preparing for that, and moving their own program to the next level to meet that. So, that's really the intent, and I think we share the same intent that you're talking about.
Okay. I had the privilege to be able to hear the young lad, Mr. Love, share his story, and it was taped, and I'm sure it's somewhere for you guys to watch it. But what I observed, and when I went through school, you know, students, boys, hey, you guys, what is this for? Why do we have to do this kind of math? Or what are we doing this for? What I see in this young man, he was, he had to use his English skills. He had to, he wrote and kept his daily diary. Now, my kids, you know, I didn't have to do that, but my kids, I've seen their daily diaries, they've had to write in it. It's pretty silly, and they don't know I read it all the time, but I find it before I throw it out. But they did writing, okay? Well, here, for his six weeks, he had to daily take down meaningful notes, and he had to go back to them and make sense out of them for his presentation. So, that's why you daily diary. And then, then he, you know, used math skills. You're using all your school skills, if we have that direction. And he said he needed that push from the teacher, and the teacher is there. So, and he, you know, he found out, he went into three projects. One of them, in the end, he says, no, I'm not going to go there. But he did a good project. But he realized that's not where he wanted to go, but he thought he wanted to go there. So, he's not wasting a whole year in college, I think is, and he used his skills, so.
Okay, we have a recommendation from this research group, and I'll entertain a motion regarding that recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the Recommendation for the High School of the Future Research Team as presented today.
Okay, a motion by Lynn, second?
Second.
Second by Pat. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the recommendation as presented this evening signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the recommendation approved. Thanks for your work, and we'll look forward to more things in the future.
Thanks.
Moving on to the District Goals, Mary Boenegrode, 2010 and 11.
We had some discussion about the direction for the District Goals during our special meeting in April, and I put those goals into writing, the first one. You'll notice, I should back up a little, HSD 2025 is driving those goals. And so, as we look at the first two goals, they support HSD 2025 implementation, and also 612 space for learning. So, the first goal is the one that you just heard about the four recommendations from the High School of the Future. Those four recommendations that we heard, moving them forward to the next steps, and eventually to an implementation plan that would come back to you for action. And we would, again, appreciate your support tonight. So unless there's any questions on that, I'll move on to the next one. The next one would be to now continue or pick up the long-term planning for secondary space for learning future needs. You remember that the board put on hold temporarily our work looking at the long-term planning for secondary space for learning, and it's time to pick that up and start moving that forward. You heard tonight Nancy Sweet's preliminary report on enrollment with growth at elementary and middle school. It's quite concerning to us that that elementary growth, particularly is in kindergarten and first grade, and thinking of that going through the system, reaching our middle school, which is, again, the largest middle school in the state. September of 2009, it was 86 students over capacity, and we hear about growth for this year as well. The board has taken action to support a short-term space for learning plan. We'll be moving forward with the next steps on that this evening. And we'd like that to last for a period of time, and we're hoping it can, depending upon our growth. But we will, that is an investment, and we'll continue to use that space even as we look at long-term planning. So, the high school, this growth from the elementary and middle school will move up to the high school, and we need to have a plan to address it at both middle school and high school, so that's what that one's about. Any questions there? All right, moving on to HSD 2025 implementation, we will advance at each level, elementary, middle school, and high school, teacher and administrator collaboration for student learning. We've talked about the importance of that, you've seen that, the results that have occurred this evening in the SMART goal report, and we want to move at each level that forward. Each of the levels are at a different place and have a different need for the next steps. And if we look at elementary, this year, they have added collaboration time. The middle school now has had collaboration time that we've added over time. And the high school needs to determine where that will occur, and how that will occur over the next year. So, each of the levels will be looking at their next steps, and then we'll be moving that forward. And the real focus there is, again, to support higher levels of learning for each student. And then, lastly, it would be develop an HSD 2025 multi-year implementation framework that represents district best practice initiatives. You know, we're at a point where we have a number of initiatives going, and we need to use this as a tool of planning for us and communication, so that it aligns with the system, it aligns a system of implementation of a best practice, and moving it to an expectation. So that if we identify a best practice, that we're really going to invest in our staff and work in staff development, eventually, over time, once teachers have learned, or principals have learned, or administrators have learned, then it needs to be the expectation in each classroom for every student in the district. And it's not a voluntary system, it's a system of expectations, and we need to make sure that we communicate to our staff, both those who are planning, those who are monitoring, and those who are implementing, how we're moving through that system, and when that will be an expectation. So, this framework will help us, and be a real important tool for us as we move forward. It'll be a multi-year tool, so that we and our staff can see where we'll implement, where we will support with professional development, and then where we will expect that that's implemented in every classroom.
Any questions regarding the recommended goals for 2010-11 for the district? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept a motion regarding this recommendation.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that the board adopt 2010-2011 District Goals as presented.
Motion by Mark. Another second? Second by Brian Bell. Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Next resolution authorizing the issuance of construction bonds, Tim Erickson.
Thanks, Tom. The next step, as Mary had mentioned, with the middle school addition, is then the awarding, as we went through the process of applying with the state, for the qualified school construction bonds. We've now been awarded that bond issuance. And so, again, these are, these are an amount of $1 million, and the interest is reimbursable to us through the federal stimulus program. It's a special program. And tonight, we've got Brian Brewer from Baird, who is our financing consultant, and Brian will go through some of the finer details and answer any questions that you do have. So, with that, Brian, I'll let you take it away.
Should be up. Should be up. Push up. Good evening. There we go. Sorry about that. Tonight, you have for your, for action, the final issuance of the qualified school construction bonds that we've been talking about for a number of months. As you heard at your July meeting, the district was awarded 1 million, an allocation of 1 million to issue, and we were out in the marketplace yesterday and this morning, finalizing the program details for your approval tonight. I just handed out, and I apologize, I thought a soft copy was being emailed for the audience, but I just handed out a summary of the final details of the issuance. The, again, a million, 1 million is the final size. The issue date is September 1st, that's when the district would receive the funds and have that available to pay project invoices. The maturities are set for 2019 and 2020, and I'll get into that on the next page. The first interest payment is April 1 of 2011, and then the redemption provisions, there is no redemption, no optional redemption, because this program has a net interest cost of 0%. So, there's no, if you want to refinance something else, we would go towards one of your higher interest cost debt issues first. There are two extraordinary redemption provisions, and those are program-specific. The federal legislation requires that if you do not spend all 1 million, you have to redeem bonds, so that's what that mandatory redemption is. And then, the optional redemption is, should the federal government ever stop paying the subsidy, you would have the ability to refinance the notes at that time. Again, it's really a failsafe, it's not something that's expected, but we built that feature in there just to protect the district. The Moody's credit rating is a AA1. The last time you went to market, your rating was a AA2. This represents a, the next category higher, and it's one off of the highest possible credit categories that Moody's Investor Service will assign. So, again, let me restate that, you are one category off of the highest possible credit category. And I'll talk a little bit more in detail in what type of group that puts you among in a later page. But your final interest rate for this issue is a 4.26%. And if you recall, the way the program works, if your final rate in the market is at or below the subsidy rate that's set daily by the federal government, you will receive a full 100% reimbursement of that interest cost. The final applicable rate for today is a 5.13%. So, therefore, the subsidized, the final subsidized interest rate, net of your direct payment, is 0.0%. Okay? The other feature that I'll add in at this point is, not only does that subsidize the interest costs, it, the program also subsidizes the, we structured it such, it subsidized the maximum allowable cost of issuance that you typically pay to do a bond issue. So, of the 26,000 approximate of cost of issuance, it paid approximately 20,000. So, the out-of-pocket cost of issuance for the district is approximately, it was approximately $6,800. So, again, under the estimates that we were talking about this spring. So, the final interest cost savings versus had you gone out and done a regular tax-exempt borrowing with the same repayment structure, it's approximately $300,000 is what the, you're avoiding in interest cost. That number, again, isolates just comparing your financing to a traditional financing. What it doesn't calculate is the earnings potential of the 1 million that you're retaining in fund balance to then, you know, accrue investment earnings until you have to make these debt repayments in the future. So, there is additional savings that will accrue to the district, but those will be known each year as you go, and how those investment rates proceed from here. So, that's the bullet summary. The next page just shows you a visual of how those payments lay out over the next 10 I'm noticing that those dates are off by a year. The 500,000, the first 500,000 is due in 2019, and then the second 500,000 is due in 2020. The interest payment at 4.2% is that middle column, and again, because the program will reimburse up to 100%, you have a direct offset. So, think of it, think of it this way, you don't make any payment until that first 500,000 comes due in 2019. So, that nine years, you have to accrue earnings on that 500,000 during that period of time. Okay? So, you're, the way we've set this up, and the way the market has laid out, the way your credit rating, your high credit rating, has allowed you to access the market at low-market rates, has allowed us to maximize all the features that this program allows school districts within this new federal program. Any questions on that before I move into the credit rating? I want to end on the credit rating report, which is the next couple of pages. But are there any questions? Again, it's basically how we had laid it out this spring, you were updated in July about the amount that you received. This is the final step of authorizing the issuance and locking in this subsidized rate of 0%.
Any questions?
So, I'll leave you with the last two pages to read on your own, but this is a copy of the actual Moody's Investor Service rating report, and it goes through what they look at, and why they decided to assign such a high credit rating to the school district. And when I say hi, I'm not, you know, I'm not saying that because I'm sitting in front of you. There, in the state of Wisconsin, there are only six school districts that have a AAA rating, which is the highest that Moody's would assign. There are only 11 that are in the AA1 category, which you were one of those 11. So, you are among the 17 highest-rated school districts in the state, out of 425, I believe. So, that's saying something. Nationally, to put it in perspective, there are only 80 school districts nationally, 80, that have achieved a rating in that AAA category. So, nationally, there are only 80 that are above where the financial standing of Hudson School District currently is. In the report, you'll see how they came to that decision, and there's, I generally break it apart as two things. You know, there's where you are, and the things that you can't really control, the location of the district, the enrollment trends, you know, various things, the wealth levels of your residents, things like that are beyond the control of the board administration. But on page five, they get into the strong financial operations expected to continue in this growing district. In there, they highlight various things that are in your control, and are a result of continued focus on the financial flexibility of this district, controlling cost, remaining under the revenue limit, you know, being, having a rapid payout of your debt profile, you have low debt burdens relative to your peer districts. They highlight those things in here, so as you're reading through, focus on some of those things. You're maintaining a fund balance and having a policy on the books that says, you know, we want to be in this range, but if we're over that range, we know where we're going with it. It's going to be reinvested in capital projects. And you've done that over the last three years or so, three or four years. They like it when you've thought about these things, you've documented it, and you've adhered to it. So, all of that came through in the rating call. We did ask the question, what more can we do, what more could you do, to move you into that AAA category? And what they've said, and what- And what they've said and what they've consistently said is that you're doing everything that you can control. You're, you know, you have high marks in all of those categories. The one category that is 40% of their rating criteria, their weighting of their rating process, is the size and the diversity of the tax base. So the district is very large at 3.6 billion of taxable property within its boundaries. However, relative to the AAA districts, the average, the median in Wisconsin is 7 million, and then nationally, it's more like nine, I'm sorry, 7 billion, and nationally, it's more like 9 billion. So there's just, the sheer size of the district is the one thing that they commented. Tim, did you recall anything else that they had weighed in on?
No.
But that was the one thing, and again, it's relatively out of your control. At, you know, you've grown rapidly over the last 20 years, but just relative to the peers, that was the one category that they had indicated keeps you out of that AAA.
Right, that's right. We, every time we go through a ratings call, we kind of ask that question, and, you know, what types of things, what types of recommendations they have. And that's really what it boils down to, is our tax base size is the big piece. And then Brian mentioned also as a secondary, the diversity of the tax base.
Brian, do you want to talk about what the benefit of these ratings are? Maybe just try to cover, you know, so people understand.
Sure, sure. The, just like your personal credit score, you know, there's all kinds of commercials these days, find out your credit score. Just like that same concept for you, when you go out to get a loan from a bank for a car, for a home, whatever it may be, they are measuring risk, the bank in that instance. In your case, investors are going out to buy your bonds. So they're competing for your bonds, and their decision on whether, how much they're willing to pay for your bonds determines what interest rates you end up with. And it's relative to every other school district or county or municipality that are out issuing bonds. So you're competing for that investor's dollar. Given where we've been over the last two years, in the credit crisis and the financial meltdown and the uncertainty of return of investment, the higher your credit quality now more than ever results in significantly lower borrowing cost. So it's, the reason we go out and get these reviews every time we lead up to a bond issue is that we, they need to reassign, reaffirm your credit rating so that we can take that out to the market, show it to the investors, and say, here's the package that Hudson School District is offering to the public, here's the credit quality that a third-party credit rating agency that assigns credit ratings to municipalities all across the country, here's the category. And it allows that investor to quickly prioritize where they want to spend their dollars. And again, through that, more people are able to purchase your bonds, driving the cost down, and therefore, driving the budget impact or tax impact, whichever it may be, lower for the issuing school district.
Any questions, comments regarding the resolution authorizing the issuance of these construction bonds? Nope? Okay. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to regarding this recommendation.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of construction bonds.
Excuse me, could you read the whole resolution, please? Thank you.
The title, just that first part.
Yeah, just the, yeah. The title, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, that's 30 pages.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and awarding the sale of $1 million taxable general obligation promissory notes, qualified school construction bonds, direct payment, providing the form of the notes and levying a tax in connection therewith.
Okay. Motion by Lynn, second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any other discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of this resolution signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion and resolution carries. Thank you, Brian.
I'd just like to point out, one of the things that has been put together for us on page five of six, and this comes from Moody's information, the last sentence there reiterates what Brian was talking about in relationship to the last time that the rating for the district was AA2. And I remember at that time, we asked if we could move to the next category. But I think that last sentence is really important to us and certainly supports the work of the board and the action you've taken. The district's general obligation rating was subsequently recalibrated to AA1, so the next higher rating, April 16, 2010. So a reaffirmation about our financial status. This has been a goal for us to reach that since I came into the district.
Well, like everything else tonight, we're making goals. Thank you, Brian. Moving on then, now that we have the money, to the middle school addition construction bid package. Tim?
Thanks, Tom. Yeah, now you have issued the bonds, now we can move forward and continue to construct that middle school addition. And tonight, we have Tom Hoffman and Sam Stotts from Hoffman LLC, and they're going to talk a little bit about the bid process and some of the, some of the things that we did to really reach out to our local contractors and talk about the volume of bid packages. There, I think there were a total of about 99 bids received on 28 different categories, and you'll see those up above. We also have included the alternates. The largest one, it seemed to be probably the most interest, is the sub-level addition that is also included here as well, when Sam goes through the packages. And one of the other things that Sam did do is, and he'll explain it as we go through, hit on a couple of bids, the, if we look at local bidders and where they came in and how much additional to award the bid to the local bidder. In some cases, in many cases, the local bidder is the low bidder. So with that, Sam and Tom, I'll let you take it from there.
All right, thanks, Tim. Not unlike your personal direct deposit, the withdrawal comes out right away, I guess. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate the opportunity to be here. Tom and I have spent a lot of time qualifying these bids that we're going to go through. First, I just kind of want to paint the picture a little bit about how we got to this point. We did send out 2,600 bid invitations to contractors. In addition to that, we advertised in papers, including the Hudson Star Observer as well as the Minneapolis St. Paul, the Pioneer Press paper. We also called a lot of the local subs, and by local, I'm using the definition of a Hudson address, and I'll get into that distinction because I think there's some good news about people even that may not have the Hudson address as their, as their place of employment. But we called the local subs and asked the ones who are of interest to make sure that they didn't have any questions. In addition, we also called some other subs that didn't show interest to ask them, do they know about this? Is there a, is there a reason why if they weren't bidding? And we did find out, you know, we'd actually had a couple people that weren't aware of it through whatever reasons, didn't read the paper or something, but we were able to talk with some. As you mentioned, Tim mentioned, we had received 99 bids in 28 categories. If you count the previous bid package that we weren't here to award, we received, I think, 103 bids, so 29 categories. That was a steel, which we bid out early because of the lead time of that steel and the expeditious pace of this schedule, and tried to get things. We didn't know if we were going to have enough time to get the steel in if we awarded it this time. So we did get a jump start on that. Actually, the steel shop drawings are already being in, so we're, we did gain that time, and it's working to our advantage. We had four categories that you'll see throughout here that had Hudson bidders in those categories. And three of the four, as Tim had mentioned, actually had a Hudson address contractor as a low qualified bidder. One of the things that Tom and I found as we were going through the qualification period, we had a lot of comments from the subcontractors that may not have had a Hudson address, talked to us about, oh, this is going to be great projects, I hope we're going to get this because I live in Hudson, or I have actually a child that goes to the Hudson, so this would be really great if we could get this. I have, we had contractors basically having some type of a connection, whether they work in Hudson often, and that's their primary place, or one of the primary places that they do jobs is in Hudson, or whether they had a home, a residence here, or a child that actually went to the middle school even. So there is a lot of participation locally, even though they may not have Hudson as their So we did obtain bids in every category with the exception of two, which was a pretty good success rate, considering the two that we did not were pretty small categories. Fire stopping, which we actually incorporated into the electrical, mechanical, and plumbing bid, and then also the spray foam insulation, which was really a small category, linked somewhat with the masonry. But we did get a letter from a contractor that said, this is something, I don't have time. If you need something from me, we can, we can work something else. So we're carrying allowances right now for those two pieces in the budget. And those numbers that I'll be talking about here in a second would reflect those allowances as well. The bid tabs that you see, you'll have two bid tabs. One is the one that is a base bid, and one is the bid tab that has the alternates included. The highlighted contractors in green are the contractors that we would be recommending. And in every case, actually, they are the low contractors. If you recall, we do have an extensive qualification process that if somebody was low, but we didn't feel was qualified, which actually did happen on Rivercrest, we would not recommend them. That's not the case in these instances. We do recommend everybody that was low in these cases. The alternates that are listed under the bid tab, alternate number one, Tim mentioned briefly there, it's actually some additional space underneath the existing building. When we were going through the design process, we felt that there was going to be an opportunity that you could get some relatively inexpensive storage space, which everybody always needs. So it's a little over 1,600 square feet of space underneath, and the reason why we thought there was going to be that opportunity is the grades out there, if you're familiar with where this is going in that center kind of courtyard area there, the grades really taper off in a hurry. And when we looked at that, we saw an opportunity that it might actually have, we might actually have the opportunity, instead of doing a foundation that's large, filling around it, and then infilling that with gravel and compacting, it's quite a bit of effort to do that, we may be able to just leave that out, not excavate it, basically buy the plank for on top of it, and then heat it, electrical, do some things. It did cost more, and we are estimating that to about 75,000 to 100,000, and that alternate did come in at 94,000. And that varies depending on which subcontractor would be awarded for the one area where Hudson contractor was not low. The second alternate was a request from the maintenance staff to replace the tile in the existing, the existing cafeteria and that expanded seating area that's located adjacent to the pool space. The tile that's there is discontinued, so they can't buy tile anymore to repair the tile that's busted. So they were thinking, if the dollars might be there, can we put it in as an alternate to provide new tile in there that wouldn't be discontinued because they would have to have a hodgepodge of other tile that did not match? So it was a request to try to incorporate that into the project if funds allowed. So that was the second alternate. And the third alternate was to have, as part of the cost containment, we wanted to have hollow metal doors, which are similar to hollow metal frames are around there, and then it's actually steel doors on the exterior side, which typically are less expensive. In this case, the aluminum doors as the alternate came in less expensive, and there's a reason for that. The bid that you'll see for the glass and glazing bid, and includes all alternates, that's On the second page, about in the middle where it says aluminum windows and glazing, there's a pretty significant difference in the spread there. When we qualified, we were pretty blunt about, do you have everything per plan and spec? They were very competitive, and sometimes in construction, you can't answer, you ask all the questions, do you have everything? And they had everything. So the bid was complete. Their door bid is actually very accurate, but they have a very competitive price for that. And thus, there's actually a credit, a very small credit, $240, if the alternate three would go to the aluminum doors, which would then match the windows and look aesthetically a little better on the outside elevation in that area. So those were the three alternates. With that, the base bid, bid tab, when you add those numbers up, you would be $119,000 under the base, or under the budget, which is about 5.9 percent. If you take the bid tab that has all of the alternates and include all of those, you would be roughly just under $14,000 still under budget, which is about 0.6 percent for the budget for the entire project. So all of those included, the, I'm sorry, the contingency that was recommended when we were working with the building committee was $120,000. That's still intact. We would not have to tap into that contingency. And the contingency that we have set up right now with this existing space, that's a 6% contingency. It's a little higher than where we were at with Rivercrest, and the reason why we feel you need that at this point is because this is a pretty complicated project. It's small, but it's got a lot of complexities to it. We've got some 12-foot walls that are going to be one-sided pores with epoxy dolls, and to talk, you know, about all the difficulties and the step footings, all that good stuff. There's a lot of things going on. In addition, you've got this going adjacent to some spaces that were just built, and you might have some conditions with the soils. We did do soil borings that are showing there could be a possibility, we might have some areas where we've got to take some soils out and possibly replace those with some decent soils and recompact that. That's not in the budget right now because there's no way we could identify exactly how much that is. So the contingency is 6%, which is a little higher than where we had it at Rivercrest, but because of those reasons, in addition, the three-hour firewall with the coiling doors, and as I mentioned, some details that are pretty complex when you're buddying up to next, there's one space by the pool where the glass and glazing comes in, that's going to get tricky. And there's some things that we're going to have to probably work through once we start peeling things off and we actually can see exactly what's behind those walls. So that's why I felt the contingency still being intact at 6% is really a good idea at this point, so. That being said, essentially, what we need to know tonight is a direction on which way you would like to proceed, if you would like to proceed with base bid only, or if the alternates, all the alternates would not have to be accepted. I mentioned the 13,000 or 14,000 you're under, that's with all of the alternates, the flooring and the doors and the additional space for the storage underneath the building. Not all three of those would have to be approved, but we would like to have directions on which ways you would like to go. And then, as Tim had mentioned, if you take a look underneath the alternate, I'm sorry, I'm looking at page three. Page three, I'm looking at the bid tab with includes all alternates, the electrical bids?
Okay.
Sorry.
If you look at page one...
104.
Yeah, 104.
104, up there. Towards the bottom, you see electrical. Steiner Plumbing and Electric is the low recommended contractor. Two down from that, you will see J&amp;L Electric. Steiner is from River Falls, so not far away, but there is a J&amp;L Electric that is from Hudson, Wisconsin. The difference between the two is $4,542, or it's a 6.8% overage to go with the Hudson contractor. We would like to have some direction on that as well tonight, if you would prefer to go with the Hudson contractor. Again, Steiner Plumbing and Electric did have everything and was qualified. And that, I'd open up for questions or comments at that point.
Any thoughts, comments, questions? Question before us tonight is regarding this bid package, regarding the alternates, the three alternates you mentioned, I'd like some direction on that, as well as the Hudson Electrical bidder, which is a $4,000 difference. I think you painted a good picture and helped everybody just understand where financially we are in terms of the budget and so forth, but yet, some concern about complexities in the project that might eat into some of that contingency. So, does it give you a, do you have a good understanding, global understanding of what the situation is?
Yeah, I think, just for my clarification, I think you said, Tom, the difference with regard to that electrical bid was $4,000?
$4,552.
Okay. That was the premium for the Hudson?
That was, that would be the premium in dollars, or I also put the percentage... That was, that would be the premium in dollars, or I also put the percentage in case there is, you know, curiosity as to what that equates as percentage wise.
Okay. I would just, going to record a thing, I would support the bid for the Hudson contractor in that case.
Okay. Comments, other comments? Mark's in favor of actually awarding the electrical bid to the Hudson contractor, which although he is, they are $4,500 higher than the lowest bid, so.
No, that would actually then reduce, if you go with all the alternates, it would reduce it to roughly nine, eight to $9,000 still under the budget. Yes.
Does it include all the alternates?
Yes.
Doesn't include the, any of the alternates at this point, right? Correct?
The, no, the thirteen thousand, eight hundred about is what it is. That's using all of the recommended bidders that I have highlighted at this time.
Right, right.
If you would go with the Hudson contractor, it would reduce it to about eight or nine thousand dollars still under budget with all the alternates in.
Oh, with the alternates in, thank you.
Yes. You're $119,000 under without the alternates.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And still, again, as Sam had mentioned, still with the contingencies, because it is a difficult project, we still do have the contingencies.
So the contingency is in place, which is a 6% of the project budget.
If we come in under the project budget, what happens to the balance or the difference that we've talked about as far as the budget goes?
Yeah, the, well, what we'll do first is we're going to spend the qualified school construction bonds of a million dollars. We want, we want to do that. And then anything, if there's any savings, then that is, because we're taking the other million out of fund balance, it's, it will be less dollars out of fund balance. But again, if we, if we're looking at the, the alternates, it does provide certainly the sixteen, about sixteen hundred square feet of the sub-level storage, which is needed. But again, Sam mentioned the VCT tile to try and, right now, that is not available. The color is not available. So this gives us an opportunity to match that up to, so it aesthetically looks good from the cafeteria into the addition. And then he, also, he went through the aluminum door, door entrances.
Did the facilities committee, did they review this? Is there a recommendation or just the first time?
This is their first time, because as we, as we were saying, with a tight time schedule, we would try, we would bring these packages before either finance, facilities and grounds or the board. And the timing of this one is that it's coming to the board.
My question would be, as far as the electrical contractor would go and the premium that we would be paying, does it serve as some advantage to the project of having J&amp;L do the project, since they're already the contractor that you recommend to do the security package?
There is advantage to that, yes. It would ease some of the coordination, because there is going to be coordination between the two contractors that needs to be, needs to be happening. So that would definitely help.
I guess I would just like to say to my fellow board members, I'd like to recommend the Hudson contractor as well and support bid package number two, including the alternates.
One question regarding, are there any other situations like, similar to the J&amp;L Electrical that's a Hudson contractor within any of the other?
No, all of the other packages that had Hudson contractors bid, the Hudson contractor was low. The exception there is painting, actually, I think, is the one that had two Hudson contractors, one of which was low. The other one, obviously, was higher.
Okay, okay. Okay, so.
My only comment on that is, you know, I agree, we should, we need to support our local contractors, but, you know, it's still 6% more. You know, I think in this case, it's the right thing to do. But I just think it's important that we as a board realize that, you know, all things being equal, we should give the business to local. But, you know, if it was a bigger part of the bid, it may, that may, 6% may be an issue. So.
May I clarify what Robin was saying? Is the, this electric company doing another project or having another part of the Hudson one?
Yes, they, they are right now the low recommended. Just below where they're at the electrical is the technology piece, the door access and camera monitoring, where they are the low recommended.
So electrical, so this way, they will do all that then, that one, the one company instead of having two together like you said?
Correct.
Well, that makes, I think that probably makes sense.
Total project budget is, what, two million?
Two million, with everything, furniture, fixtures, equipment, everything.
Give you perspective.
I guess I should just state as well, Tom, that I would also support the alternates.
Okay. We've heard a number of commentary, so would anybody like to put this in the form of a motion?
You don't have to read anything this time.
It would be easier if I have to.
Yeah, Mr. President, move to approve the construction bid package as presented with the three alternatives and to award the electrical bid to J&amp;L.
Okay, motion by Brian.
Second.
Second by Lynn. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, we're, moving on to the consent agenda items then, and I'll read each one and then we'll take them cumulatively here in an action. First consent agenda item is the approval of July 13th, 2010, 2010 regular in August, second, 2010 special board meeting minutes. Second item, personnel hires, changes, leaves and resignations. Third item, revenues and expenditures, and we'll need to get probably a specific one.
I got it.
Correction, $716.
Oh, sorry, that was us. Couldn't read Mary's writings. Got the correction at 716 instead of 916. Payroll, EFT, ACH, payments, cash receipts, insurance, tracking, cash receipts, investment receipts and expenditures that we just mentioned. Fourth item is the Vision Impairment Program Agreement with Prescott School District continuing. So those are the consent agenda items. I hear a motion.
Mr. President, move to improve the consent items, including moving the director of financial services be authorized to pay bills in the amount of $2,942,716.46.
Done this before. Thank you, Brian. Motion by Brian, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mark. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Consent agenda items are approved. Okay, takes us to, I believe, one committee report tonight, Mr. Bell and the Finance Committee.
I see the Finance Committee meeting's always working.
Oh, what a shot.
Assumption that the others aren't.
So we met on July 26th. First we, first topic was Jared Rossing. Our, our financial service manager's done a great job for us. He's taking a job in another district in Wisconsin. He's going to be, he's going to be...
What's that?
Yep. So it's great, you know, it's, we have great talent and invested in them and this is, it's, it's good for him and leaves a hole, but we're going to search for his replacement. It's a fifteen, lots of applications, and looking to have someone on board in the next few weeks.
Okay.
Then we talked about the, what Brian just talked about on our school construction bond. Estimated fund balance is kind of aligned with what we thought was going to be around 15.8 million. And then we review the budget that's already been reviewed tonight.
Okay, any questions for Brian, Finance Committee?
I just want to compliment the Finance Committee, along with Tim Erickson and the board for their fiscal management and achieving that AA one rating.
Congratulations.
Nice job, Tim.
All right. Hearing no questions for the Finance Committee, then I don't believe we have any citizens request to speak. Do we have, no. Then we will adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, parent one, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating about the sale and or purchase of public properties. We'll take a roll call vote.
We need a motion.
I'm sorry, need a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.85, parent one, parent E, for the purpose of deliberating about the sale and or purchase of public properties.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Second from Brian. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call, roll call vote.
Kaiser shot, aye.
Bell, aye.
Robson, aye.
Holland, aye.
German, aye.
Okay, motion approved. We are, okay, we don't expect any action coming back, so I'm a rookie at this. Okay, we are adjourned.